Your motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have Jordana and Chris. And it's gonna come open.
Victoria, I don't have, because I'm driving, so I don't have a computer, so I'm just saying verbally hi.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm just waiting for Alex, Sandy, and I got, I'm just waiting for Alex and Sandy.
Um, yes, and I'm trying to.
I got you, yeah. So just Sandy.
I think I just.
Oh, I, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. All right, so that's you, me, and I missed. Sorry.
Great.
That rain? I hope so.
All right, since the meeting is opened, if we can all stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, um, so a couple, couple things. We have a lot of people here tonight, which is great. I think that's wonderful. We have a lot of matters to cover that are very important to people. A couple of quick things. Public input number one is going to be for items not related to the school opening that we've received correspondence on. We will then have the presentation from administration, and at which point we will have input, uh, it'll be open for any kind of questions or comments from the public after the administrator's presentation. Board members, you know, you could jump in at any time and/or ask questions similar to last week's format. But with that, we'll move to public input number one. And if there's anybody, Scott, if you could unmute people one at a time, we'll take it from there.
Okay, we have Melissa Ann Mitchell.
Okay.
Melissa, are you with us?
Melissa?
Can you hear me now? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Um, okay, I actually came on to just participate and listen to what everybody was gonna do tonight. I emailed a letter in to the board, I think, a few days ago. So I don't really need to read over that. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood where I was coming from with my concerns about reopening for the kids. My main concern was that it wasn't very clear to me whether or not that decision was made to keep 10 through 12 home for online learning, or if there was a true choice between that and the every other day hybrid model. So that was my real concern.
A decision has not been made yet, and that's what will be discussed this evening from administration with board questions and also from, from the public to hear. A decision has not been made yet. There was a, I'm not gonna even say a recommendation or a thought. It was a recommendation based on information at the time. Information's coming daily, so that the plan is fluid. So we're gonna hear the updates tonight from our superintendent and administration.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I really appreciate everyone's efforts to make sure that we have a safe reopening when we're ready to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only person I see with a hand raised, Brian.
Okay, I do have some correspondence. Dearest deemed members of the board, this is from Emily Whites McLean. I'd like to respectfully urge you all to take into account the crisis occurring in our country. Not the coronavirus, but the crisis of race relations. Our students, no matter their background, would well, would be well-served to see more people of color in positions of authority. With 10 to 20 positions to fill, including the top position in the high school, this is an excellent opportunity to walk the walk in terms of equality and justice. I urge you to make diversity a top priority as you look to fill these positions. It would not only be a meaningful way to take action toward representation and justice, it would also send a clear message to our community and others that we are willing to grow and change to serve our students in the most effective way. Thank you for your leadership and your service to all members of the community. I have several other emails throughout the past few days and a large volume of emails today that we will all be putting up, making available to the public after tonight. If we don't hear from some of the speakers, we will then read them at a later date in terms of public input. They've been disseminated to the board, so the board has reviewed everybody's thoughts and suggestions as we move forward with tonight's discussion. With that, I would ask our superintendent to walk us through the update.
I'm sorry, but we do have another person with a hand up now. Would you like to hear from that person first?
Sure, as long, yeah.
Okay, so it's Kelly DeSessa.
Oh.
Yes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Kelly DeSessa. Do you need my address?
Sure.
91 Harrison Street, Sec Harbor, New York, 11963. Okay, so I just have two quick points that I want to make. One is in reference to the survey. I'm not sure if that's gonna be addressed to not, tonight, or not. But I had a real concern with the result of the survey. The question asked whether if school was available online, would I still send my child to school? My response was yes, and it was recorded as a no. And the only reason why I was able to do that was at the end of the survey, I was able to review my answers. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, as well as the task force conducting the survey. I'm not sure if anyone else had difficulties, but just on the general census of what is the direction parents wanna move in, whether they wanna return to school in person versus distance learning, I think it's relevant to know that that was recorded incorrectly. And my second point, I just wanna make a recommendation. As a community health nurse, I think that we need to address this pandemic as a community health concern. So in addition to the education and the conversation on returning to school, I think, starting as soon as possible, we should find a way to offer education to parents in the home right now to start teaching these kids what school might look like if, in fact, they do return in person. And my suggestion would be perhaps a daily email, or at least, at the very least, a weekly email with information regarding, just educating the kids about how to properly wash their hands, when and where to wear your mask, what the environment might look like at school, so that parents can start perhaps role modeling at home and doing some role-playing with the children to get them more comfortable and hopefully start to leave some discipline and quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott? With that, proceed, Jeff. Thank you.
No worries. So, welcome, everyone. I see we have 121 participants. So thank you for attending remotely this evening. Tonight, I'm gonna break down agenda item 4.1 through 5.3, basically into three components. One is an overview of the process, if you will. The second is the subcommittee of the survey. The subcommittee of the task force that was charged with creating the survey will review the results. And then I will come back and talk about additional options that the administrators have been brainstorming. So let me start out by just providing an overview of the timeline and, and some of the thinking and where we're at with regard to reopening. For those of you who are not familiar, it's, it's been a pretty tight timeline. The, the state came out with their guidance on July 16th. The Department of Health came out with their guidance on July 13th. And the plans are due to be posted to the website, the school district website, on July 31st, and districts are supposed to submit a brief survey to the state by July 31st as well. So from the 16th to the 31st, we were really looking at 15 days to come up with a, a plan for reopening. The state has recognized that everything is fluid. I'm gonna use that word a few times tonight. And so in the submission to the state, they're not asking really for specificity. They realize that the plans that are posted to the website, the school district website, will change. But I wanted to provide an overview of that, just so you realize how everything is moving in, in real time quite quickly. The next thing I wanna do related to the overview is, is just make a statement that I've made several times, and I feel as the superintendent, I, I don't necessarily think that the statement suggests that I support a specific position, but I think it's important to be very transparent in stating it. And that is that if, in fact, we return to school, and it looks as though we will, in what form, we're not quite sure, it's important to state, and I've stated it before, that infection rates will go up and transmission rates will go up. That's unavoidable. So in returning to school, there are many reasons to do so. We need to acknowledge that both of those things will happen, and that's based in science. The next thing I wanna talk about is a little about the thinking that went into the original proposal. The original proposal that went out, as the superintendent and the other administrators as well, I feel as though our obligation is to always look out for the safety and well-being of the students that are under our supervision. Parents entrust us with their care, and we have an obligation to make decisions and recommendations and frame discussions based on facts and research. So in our original recommendation, we considered three important areas. The first area was, is the available research out there regarding COVID-19. And since it's only, only been around for less than half a year, there's not a lot, a lot of longitudinal research out there that studies it over time. But the latest research suggests that students or children age 0 to 10, or 1 to 10, are less likely to suffer the severe consequences of the virus, although they still can suffer some inflammatory conditions that are quite serious. But overall, they don't suffer the same magnitude of illness as, in general, as older portions of the population.
Excuse me, Jeff? I hate to interrupt, but I'm seeing a note on the side saying that the meeting was capped at 100 participants, and that there are many people who actually registered to join and can't get in because of that cap. Is there anything that can be done now, since they, you know, they, they registered, and then I'm sure they're desperate to try to join?
There is not, unfortunately, Chris. Our subscription caps us at 100 attendees. We've never had anywhere near this before, so 100 has been more than enough the entire time we've had this. So that is the cap on our, on our subscription.
Is this being, is this being livestreamed on the site or anything where they can, they can at least watch it, or no?
It is not at the moment. I can see if I can do that. Jordana, you had a comment?
I was thinking we could, if you are logged in twice, because I know that you sometimes do that, maybe one of your logins could do a screen share on, like, even on Facebook or YouTube, whatever. I don't know if that's possible.
I'm trying to set it up on YouTube right this second, that we can just do a livestream right from here. So let me just see something. Looks like it's, it's setting it to go, so just give me a moment. I apologize. Like I said, we've, we've never had anywhere near this amount of attendees.
And for the public, we, we apologize for that. We, we, we will look into that after tonight's meeting, so that we can ensure that more than 100 participants are able to come to these meetings.
So just.
And I apologize for interrupting the presentation. I just, before we went much further, I thought it made sense to try to at least accommodate.
We apologize for that. We, we, we will look into that after tonight's meeting, so that we can ensure that more than 100 participants are able to come to these meetings.
So just, okay.
And I apologize for interrupting the presentation. I just, before we went much further, I thought it made sense to try to at least accommodate.
We apologize for that. We, we, we will look into that after tonight's meeting, so that we can ensure that more than 100 participants are able to come to these meetings.
So just, okay.
And then I apologize for interrupting.
We're on loop, Chris.
I'm a ventriloquist. I can keep my mouth closed and still talk.
It says we're live on YouTube.
Great. Thank you very much for that quick fix, Scott.
So how do people access the YouTube if they wanna watch?
I need to post a link on our website. I'm trying to do that right now without ending this meeting.
You're the best, Scott. Thank you.
Trying. You can proceed with the meeting while I do that, if you'd like, Brian.
Yep, that'd be great. If you could continue, Jeff, while Scott's doing that.
Where I was at was touching upon the research and reviewing the fact that younger children aged 1 to 10 are less apt to suffer the serious side effects of the virus. And then when we were interrupted, I was about to say that their ability to transmit the virus is significantly less than other ports of the population. And that comes from a study in South Korea that's sort of the benchmark for transmission as it relates to age groups. They studied 10 to 20-year-olds. They did not break it down into 10 to 15 and 15 to 20, so 10 to 20 is all that's available. And what they determined was that, again, the 10 to 20-year-olds were less likely to suffer the serious side effects of the virus, whatever. But their transmission capabilities were congruent with the adult population. So as transmitters of the virus, they were pretty serious. So that was consideration number one, was the science. Consideration number two, I like to refer to as the economics, and that is that we have to get back to work. And that's not only a Sag Harbor issue, it's an issue in the United States, and it's an issue around the world, that getting students into school addresses childcare and enables people to go back to work. So that was the second consideration, and obviously, we prioritize the younger children. And the third consideration was the fact that, once students are in school, which grade levels were easiest to cohort, were easiest to, in other words, keep together because of their schedules, so their, the extent to which they interacted with a larger population was minimized. And the way school scheduling works, that was really K through 9. So those were the three primary factors in the original recommendation. And as much as I know that it was a starting point, I feel as though the obligation for a superintendent and the administration is to make an initial recommendation based on the available evidence and the science that's out, that is out there. Having said that, I also know, having worked in schools for a number of years, that it's a starting point, and by no means is that decision final. So what did we do after we made that initial recommendation? Is we put out a survey to ascertain what the community thought with regard to reopening schools. And that's another consideration in terms of how we adjust moving forward. And then, related to that, we have not stopped looking at scenarios that address all of our community's concerns. So we've been brainstorming ideas to get all of the K through 12 population back into school, whether it's on alternating days, whether it's on specific parts of the day. And each day in school, we're pressure-testing those scenarios and referencing it to the Department of Health guidance and the state guidance, with the goal being to come up with a solution that sort of satisfies everybody. And I'll get into that a little later tonight. But what I wanted, the, the public who's listening tonight, to know is that, again, I, I feel as though we had an obligation to present the science-based recommendation to start, and then to proceed in a measured way moving forward with community input to consider other options. So by no means is this decision made, as Brian said earlier. We're in the, we're in the beginning process, and if, if I've learned one thing with COVID-19, it's that you have to adapt, because once you think that something's static, it changes. So again, after we go through the survey results, I'll come back and talk a little bit about those options, and then we'll open it up to the community to share their thoughts. I do wanna mention a couple of things that have weighed in to our thinking. And when I say "our," the administration's thinking with regard to our planning. One of the things that, that is very important right now is the whole mechanism through which schools are free to notify the community should we have cases of COVID-19 in the school. And we have been in touch with people and referenced the, the department, actually, the New York State guidance on reopening school. And I just wanna be very clear that should a case pop up in the school, it's very similar to what happened last spring, after the closure of school, where we're supposed to be deferential to the Department of Health. So for argument's sake, a hypothetical, let's say we're back in school in September, and we learn that one of our students has tested positive for COVID-19. The logical step, you would think, would be for the school to notify those students in the cohort, or those students who met the criteria, or meet the criteria established by CDC as being eligible to be notified. In fact, that really is not the way it's going to work. We're supposed to be defer to the Department of Health, who's then supposed to issue guidance to the schools on who to notify and how to do that. That raises a little bit of a red flag in my mind, because that was the guidance that was issued last spring, and when, in fact, we had cases of COVID in the community after the school district closed. I did not find out, as principal of the building, about those cases from the Department of Health. I, in fact, found out from the families, out of a general concern for the broader community. So I don't have a lot of confidence, and I hope things have changed, and I hope the Department of Health is able to operate more efficiently. But certainly, that is in the back of my head informing my thinking, and I think it's important families to know the protocols and the, the procedures we have to follow should there be cases in the school come the fall. The second thing I wanna touch on real quickly is the notion of alternative spaces. So I know I've gotten a lot of emails from people I know in the community. I've had their kids, and they've suggested, you know, repurposing spaces from, whether it's churches or buildings that are unoccupied, whether it's renting tents, whatever it is. And I just wanna be very clear that in all of those situations, we have to go through the Office of Facilities Planning at the state. And as much as we'd like to think that they have relaxed the standards related to the code issues that we have to satisfy before using those facilities, that's not the case. So if we, for instance, wanted to use a building that was used for something else, and we were interested in leasing it, we would have to send the blueprints of the building to the Office of Facilities Planning. They'd have to do an assessment as to whether it met code for schools, and any changes would have to be made prior to us utilizing that facility. It's a little bit different for tents. They classify it as temporary tents and permanent tents, but in bold instances, you have to adhere to fire code and other codes pertinent to, to school use. So we have gone so far as to get quotes for tents, and we've thoroughly investigated. I just wanna be, I wanna make the community aware that this is not something that we just said, hey, that's not something we're gonna do. We've, we've looked at it thoroughly and continue to look at it. But right now, it doesn't really seem to be a reasonable option, given the number of hurdles you have to clear in order to use the facility. So with that, I've talked a lot. I would like to turn it over to the subcommittee of the task force that generated the survey. And I'd like them to share those survey results with the community, knowing that it's just one more piece of the puzzle that we can sort of reference in deciding a way forward. And then I'll come back and talk about the additional options. So why don't I turn it over to Chase Malia and Nancy Halleck, who, I just wanna thank them and the rest of the committee for their work thus far.
Hi, Scott. I'm trying to share my screen, but it says the host has to enable screen share. Okay, hold on one second, and it should work. Okay, can everyone see my screen at this point?
I can see it, Chase.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so just a few things about the survey before we start. First of all, I want everyone to be aware that, you know, this is not a scientific survey. There were some issues in the way that the survey was rolled out, and I'm just gonna step up and own some of that. The survey was written on Google Docs, and in its translation over to Google Forms, some of the comment boxes were not present, which kind of limited some parents' ability to respond and comment in ways that we had intended. Fortunately, I read over those comments, and it seems like a lot of parents took the opportunity to comment about questions in other areas of the survey. So it's good that we were able to see some of that feedback. I'm gonna take you through some of the questions, and then Nancy is gonna help me out by speaking to some of the comments that were left in each of the sections. So the first question that appeared after the demographic information on the survey itself was with regard to whether parents intended to send their kids to school in the fall if a remote-only option was also available. And in total, from all those who participated, we saw that the majority, about 72% of families, were intended to send their kids to school in the fall. And among those who did not, the main reason was concerns about safety, and fewer concerns about their child wearing a mask all day, and some who picked no. And I think a lot of these people picked no because they wanted a chance to comment. And so some of them are actually yeses, but they wanted a chance to comment on some of their concerns. So that was the first question. We broke it down also by our Spanish-speaking families, and you could see that all of the 19 families that responded said, yes, they would like to send their kids to school. And then we broke it down also by grade level. So the 10th through 12th, and the 9th through 12th, and middle school and elementary school. And you could see for each of the different groups, the majority of people intended to send their kids to school, but that could provide some useful information for those making decisions about the size of cohorts and so on. Second question was about transportation. I'm not gonna break this one down in the same way I broke the previous one down, but the majority of families in the community did not intend to utilize district busing. And that was also true, for the most part, with our Spanish-speaking population, and you could see that there. Question, next question was about lunch. Are you okay with the idea of students eating lunch in classrooms or possibly outdoors and not being able to use the cafeteria? And the majority of people did not have an issue with that. And that was also true of our Spanish-speaking families. We did ask a question about remote learning in terms of what were the areas that need improvement. Certainly, the teachers and those in the building know that we have a lot of improvements that need to be made to make remote learning, if it's necessary in the fall, to be improved. So I broke the suggestions down by the English-speaking families and the Spanish-speaking families, and I broke out the three biggest concerns in, for the English-speaking families, they were increasing the opportunities for social interaction, increasing live instruction from teachers, and communication with classroom teachers, having more communication. For our Spanish.
I was just gonna ask, did you find any difference based on the grade?
I was just going to ask, did you find any difference based on the grade or age of the student? Because I heard from parents that they had a different, they had different feedback for their elementary than for their high school. I don't think we offered that in the survey, but I was just wondering if, at least with families where you didn't have both, if you saw a difference.
Great, great question. And I didn't notice a major difference. The need for social interaction really came through at all grade levels, including with our Spanish-speaking families. And the communication and live instruction were also significant for all grade levels. So that, that was pretty consistent all the way through. And then for our Spanish-speaking families, they also again voiced the need for social interaction, but they separately picked supporting parents to better assist them with helping their students with their work. So that's an area I think we have of need that we need to reach out to some of our Spanish-speaking families and make sure that we're working with them on that. In terms of the plan itself, there were two options that were presented in the survey. One was the plan that was described in the introduction. And the second was an alternative option. As a brief reminder, the plan that was described in the introduction was to send all pre-K through ninth graders back to school, along with those with special needs and English language learners. And to have our 10th through 12th graders learn remotely with the possibility of bringing them in one day a week. The alternative to that, and so that is in red. The alternative to that was to have pre-K through six English language learners and those with special needs attend every day. And seven through 12 to work or to come in on an alternating schedule. And you could see that overall there was a slight, although again, since this is not a scientific survey, I wouldn't call that a significant. But there was a slight, slightly more people preferred the plan in the introduction. But when we actually broke it down, our Spanish-speaking families, the slight majority there preferred the alternative option, which was for seven through 12 to be on an A-day, B-day schedule. And when we broke it out for our 10th through 12th and 9th through 12th graders, you could see the vast majority of them preferred the alternating schedule to allow their children to attend in person. When we broke it out by the middle school and the elementary school, and this is a little confusing. So just be careful up here on the top, the colors switched. And I wasn't able to switch that back. So when we broke it out for the elementary school, the slight majority preferred the plan in the introduction. Sorry, for the middle school, the slight majority preferred the plan in the introduction. And then for the elementary school, the majority just preferred the plan in the introduction. So you could see there was a breakdown there and depending on the age and grade level of the child, how people felt about the plan. We did ask questions about whether the school needed to contact. And for most of our English-speaking families, you could see that this may give an estimate of the number of at-risk students or students with special circumstances. But for our Spanish-speaking families, they, they did request, the majority of them did request that the school reach out to the family to contact them. So again, that might just symbolize a need for the school to, to reach out to those families. Nancy is going to speak a little bit about some of the comments, particularly for the two questions. And again, I do apologize for the two questions where the comment boxes were most prevalent. So that was the one about sending kids to school and the one about the two different plans. So Nancy, you want to take over?
Okay. So the comments, there were quite a few comments and we thank everyone who took the time to add that extra input to help us get a better understanding of what your needs were. In terms of sending students, the comments, there was an overwhelming preference for student, the high school students to have some in-person instruction and noting concerns, high concerns with mental health, supervision at home or lack of supervision, college readiness and effective learning. Some comments express opinions about little risk to students. So therefore, students should be returning. While other people expressed concern for the risks to the students, but also to the parents and caregivers and the teachers. The elementary school comments, there were quite a few of them that spoke about their willingness to send their children back was kind of dependent on or influenced by a desire for minimal mask wearing. So that came across quite clearly. Some people were, though they indicated, yes, they said that ultimately their decision was, would be based more on the more detailed plans that would be revealed. And so, so far, the survey was starting with a framework. The exact details of the plan will be carried out from moving forward. And just as a note on that, when the task force originally met, the discussion was to bring students on board for when it was time to create the plan because the students are the ones that are living this. And especially at the older level have, really have an important say in it. So just so everyone knows that that was always the plan, that students would be brought in to help give their input for that. Some of the decisions at the elementary school for fifth grade, there was, there were concerns about returning their children, their fifth graders to school if it was in the middle school building. So that was a comment that came through several different times. Also, some in the high school and middle school, when they spoke of the in-person instruction, they also spoke about wanting to have a bell schedule for the alternate days. But then there were other people who said that they did not want a bell schedule on the alternate days. So we had comments on both sides. There was a lot of interest in the feasibility to use tents for outdoor spaces and alternative locations. There was a lot of concern for the 10th through 12th graders for concern for college preparation and how this would affect students preparing for college. There was concern about what this would look like for Bosie students, how, how this looks like for the Bosie students. There was also concern expressed about people who might be sending their children to school with mild symptoms. So there was, there were a lot of comments. The majority have to say, a lot of, just, everyone is looking out for their kids. They're looking, everyone wants the best for their children. And that's what came across loud and clear. There is a huge amount of concern for the mental health for not only the high schoolers, but the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers. There was a lot of concern expressed about how difficult the spring remote learning was when that rolled out and that should there be any remote learning, they, there's, there was a wish and a desire or an insistence that it needed to look differently. So I think that when the plan comes, is put together, I think that will be helpful. Jeff has already expressed that whatever that instruction looks like in the fall, it will, it will look different. So I think one more of those specifics come out, it will be hopefully reassuring to parents. But a, a lot of concern about how the, the, the learning progressed or did not progress during the spring and how that was influencing opinions now. So given that the information available was only the experience that was had, you know, you're using that as your frame of reference for what it might look like again in the fall. So that, that definitely was predominant. So I don't know.
Can I, can I say a question?
Absolutely.
How many people took the survey and how many did our Spanish population take it?
We had 19 Spanish-speaking families took the survey and the survey, whether we count duplicates from, on a family basis, with something like 400 or so families.
Okay.
Participated in the survey, but there were some doubles and stuff like that when we take it out. So I, I'll get back to you with an exact number, but give or take about 400 families.
And Chase, this is your, there's one more question. How many students did those families represent?
That is something that I don't have for you, but that's a good question. You can figure that out.
All right, perfect. Yes, thanks.
There are no other questions. I am going to.
You know, I, I, one more question. We didn't survey any of the students at this point, correct? So when we, when we sent the survey out and asked about feedback about how the distance learning went this spring, this is data from parents.
Correct.
But we, but we didn't ask, and, and you know, obviously you're not going to survey a five-year-old. But certainly it would be interesting to have, you know, our, our, you know, middle school, high school students participate in a survey from their perspective as well. And so I hope that we're, you know, really going to engage their feedback. I know we talked about including them in some committees, but I do think that getting their feedback's important.
Okay, I'm turning it back over.
Brian, do you want me to move forward with the next section? Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, I was muted. I, I would ask, just because of the limit on the amount of people we can let in, I would ask the administrators to, and, and the presenters tonight to go through 5-1, 5-2 and 5-3. And then as we hear from the public, if the public, after you ask your question, if you would be kind enough to log out and then watch the hearing on YouTube livestream, which will allow other parents or community members to log in and ask questions. So I think we should go forward with all the presentations unless there's an objection from the board. And I would just again ask, after we hear from members of the public, after your question is answered, if you would be so kind as to log out and then watch the rest of the meeting live on YouTube, which would allow other people to log in. And just rest assured, for next week's meeting on Monday, August 3rd, we will have the hundred, the cap of 100 people hopefully worked out by then, so we can exceed that number. But moving forward, while we're all here this evening, I would ask that, let's continue the presentations and then go to the Q and A.
Scott, as an, as, as an aside, how many, how many individuals actually registered to join the meeting?
I, I don't have that in front of me, Chris. I can.
We can get that later. Let's, let's proceed with the meeting. More than 100.
Yes.
So Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to proceed with the additional options at this point, if that's okay?
Please.
So as per my comments before, the administration has been working on additional reopening options. Can you put up the, the PowerPoint that we can use as a visual to go through this process?
It, it's up now, Jeff. Can you see it?
Yes. Okay. So let's go to the first slide. Can you advance it? Okay, so before I get into this, I, I just want you to know that, and I think most people know this, but that the nature of COVID and the fast-changing environment, thankfully in New York, not that fast-changing at this point, but elsewhere in the country, has necessitated institutions, both public schools and institutions of higher education to change their plans in a, on a pretty rapid basis. In fact, there's a front page article in the Wall Street Journal today that speaks to the fact that institutions of higher education are having to change their plans. So much so that like two weeks ago, they were, they made announcements that everybody would come back in person and then, you know, today or yesterday, they've made, they've made changes to require or to state that everything's going to be remote. So thankfully, we don't have that situation in, in New York at this time. But I think any planning moving forward has to anticipate those types of possibilities. And, and the way to anticipate that is to come up with multiple options, which is what I'm going to speak about right now. The first option is what we just talked about. And I was very careful tonight to, to frame that as an initial recommendation, not necessarily a decision that's set in stone. Over the last, the, the minute we announced that and, and we knew it prior to putting it out there, there would be many people who would be disappointed with the 10-12 component. Because despite our best efforts, remote learning, and we've been very clear about this, does not replicate the teaching and learning that goes on in our classrooms every day. So even next year, and we'll get into that in a little bit, with professional development, additional professional development and some added structure, it's still for those students who are engaging in it, whether it's a daily or every other day or once a week or whatever it is, will not replicate what inspires in the classroom. So knowing that, we came up with two additional options. The first option was included in the survey, which was initially described as pre-K through six every day and a hybrid situation for grades nine through 12. Since we put out the survey, we've been crunching numbers and going over enrollment, square footage in classrooms, referencing the guidance issued by the state. And we believe that option number two, we can expand from pre-K through six to pre-K through eight every day. And then grades nine through 12 with a hybrid schedule. And what that hybrid schedule would look like, Scott, can you go on to the next slide or two? Be the next one, option number two, because I've already gone over that. So option number two, what would happen is that there would be instruct, in-person instruction for pre-K through eight. And then grades nine through 12, we would attempt to cohort students into small groups, which are basically 10 to 12 students. 10 to 12 students complies with the square footage requirements that the state has stipulated. But in doing that, we can't have everybody in every day. So what we would do is we would bring half of the students in on Monday and Tuesday. And then half, the other half of the students on Thursday and Friday. With Wednesday being an all-remote day, where students would learn remotely. And then on Wednesday, in the middle school, high, well, in the high school grades nine through 12, we could also do extensive cleaning of those spaces that were utilized. So the, the group of students that would come in on Thursday, Friday would be sitting in desks that were sanitized. So that is option number two. Most of the districts on Long Island that I've spoken to are doing something like this. Some iteration very similar to this. It might be pre-K or K through six and then seven through 12 is remote. I mean, seven through 12 is a staggered schedule where half comes, half the week and half comes the other half of the week. So our plan, option number two, is very similar. The difference is we're pushing through eighth grade. But nine through, but nine through 12 would be every other day. Now, there's a question that's been asked and I, and, and even the survey speaks to a significant number of people who may opt to not send their kids to school. And how do we serve those students? Well, typically in New York State, if a family decides to not send their kids to school, if they're under the age of 16, they're required to submit a, a home learning or a homeschooling plan with the Office of the Superintendent. But with the guidance that's come down from the state, it is pretty clear that districts now have an obligation to provide remote instruction to families who decide not, to students who decide not to attend school because of COVID. So what would that remote instruction look like for, for students who do not, who decide not to go to school? Well, at the middle school, high school, the tentative thinking is that it would be a live stream of the classes throughout the day. So if I was a student in seventh grade or, or 11th grade and I decided, or my family decided that I was not coming to school and I was studying remotely, I would be able to access a regular schedule and follow it in a Google Classroom setup. So I'd follow a bell schedule. I would access those classes and that would be the remote experience. The school would probably have to, and we have to work out the details, provide some additional assistance in terms of navigating that. And it may be additional personnel assigned to that remote population. Six through 12, but the details of that, we have to work out, but that's the general idea. At the elementary school, it's a little different because the younger age students can't follow a live stream. So Mr. Malone has been working on devising or developing a plan for the remote option for those families who elect not to send their kids to school. And Mr. Malone, do you want to chime in with a quick overview of that?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. I think, I, I think I may have referenced this at last week's meeting when we touched upon. when we touched upon the remote learning advancements that we need to make. And in response to a lot of the important feedback that we received, we, we would focus on not, as Jeff, as Jeff indicated, not providing a full day of livestreamed instruction. However, we would focus on the two, two key points that have come up. Increasing the social interaction opportunities for the children to be together, but also definitely increasing the amount of live instruction that would be provided by the teachers.
Thank you. So moving on to option number three, Mr. Fisher. This is something that we were brainstorming the latter half of last week into this week. Falls outside the realm of what most districts are doing, but we thought it would be worthwhile to present it to the public as something that we're, we're sort of trying to work with, because there are some advantages to this and some disadvantages. In this scenario, we wouldn't be pre-K through eight every day. It would be pre-K through nine every day. And we would stick to the cohorting of students, basically in groups of 10 to 12. With all of these scenarios, lunch will be served in the classrooms. And then from periods one through four, which is basically 7:50 and then four 40-minute blocks, we would have grade 10 come in. And they would basically focus on the core subjects, math, science, social studies, English, and foreign language. They would get math and science every day, and they would get English and social studies alternate days, foreign language every day as well. And as per some comments that were made in the survey, it becomes a little more difficult to cohort these students because their schedules have more variability. Because some students are in AP tracks, some students are in IB tracks, some students are in regular tracks, some students have elective focuses. And it becomes a little more difficult, but we feel confident that we can cohort them, obviously more than a typical day, and that will be the goal. And then grades 11 and 12 would come in period six through nine. So what would happen is, after the grade, grade 10 leaves at the end of period four, period five would be a cleaning period where the custodians, and I have to, and we'll work with our facilities director to make this happen, would go into the classrooms and question and clean everything so that grade 11 and 12 students who come in would be seated in seats and desks that were sanitized. And they would follow basically the same schedule. The advantages of scenario three versus scenario two are that those grade 10 through 12 students are in school every day versus two days a week. The disadvantage is that we have to condense the schedule a little more than normal. And I don't think the cohorting will be as complete or as thorough as it would be in option number two. So what has the administrator's day looked like pretty much the last week or so? It's been more than a week, the last two weeks. But the last week or so, we've been pressure testing these different scenarios, looking at the number of rooms we have, the enrollment, what the number of students in each room would look like, and how we could make it happen. We know that our community, through emails that we've received, have expressed a lot of concern with regard to students in grades 10 through 12 remaining home and studying remotely. So we're doing our best at this point to put out some other options so that we can include them in the plan submission to the state. And as we get closer to September, you know, we can, we can crystallize which direction we go. But again, from the state's perspective, one of the things that they really want to see in plans is flexibility to adapt to the conditions on the ground. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions about each scenario at this point prior to turning it over to public input, too.
Jeff, I just had a question about that last point that you made. So what, what is it that we need to do next in terms of submitting something to the state? And what, what kind of detail is needed there? And then what kind of flexibility are we going to have? You know, the world looks a lot different now than it did 30 days ago, and it's probably going to look a lot different 30 days from now. So that's what I'm just trying to understand is what, what is the next step in terms of whatever proposal we're going to submit to the state for approval?
So what happens right now, prior to the 31st, we have to submit a survey to the state, which is basically like a three-page document where we check a bunch of boxes that says, "Our plan will consider A, B, C, D, E." Just us attesting to the fact that we're going to consider social distancing, we're going to consider sanitary practices, we're going to consider transportation protocols, all things that speak to making sure that students are safe. Then the state has said, "We don't want to see your plan submitted to us. We would like you to, to post them to your website because we realize that those documents are going to be works in progress and that they, in fact, may have to change as the conditions locally change." So short-term, the answer to your question is, we'll complete the document, send it to the state by Friday, and post our tentative reopening plan on the 31st with different scenarios in place. But the ultimate decision as to, you know, when, what we're going to do does not need to be made by July 31st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other board questions? I think, let's go to the board questions first, and then let's get to the public, because there's a lot of people waiting to speak.
Yeah, I had two questions. One was actually a point, just Jeff, I think, in option three, I'm not sure you hit on the fact that there won't be remote learning. Like if you're in grade nine and you're coming in in the morning, or if you're in grade 10 and you're coming in in the morning, it's not like there'll be remote learning in the afternoon. It's just a truncated day.
Thank you for pointing that out. So unlike, unlike option number two, since you're coming in every day for that abbreviated schedule, that will be the extent of your contact with the teachers. Whereas in option number two, as you point out, the days that you come into school, you'll be interacting with the teacher. So if I'm in a group and I come in Monday and Tuesday, I'm going to class, and then on Thursday and Friday, I would be following a livestream session, if you will. So the curriculum will move forward at five days a week, but I will be in session two days a week.
And then the other question I have, so if you think about, you know, option two, for the high schoolers, you're proposing this synchronous remote learning so that if you're not in school on Monday and Tuesday, you're still following along remotely, along the bell schedule, and then Thursday and Friday, it flips. And in the elementary school, I completely understand that that model doesn't work for the people who choose to keep their kids remote. But I just wanted to point out for Mr. Malone that if, right, you're going to have this population that's remote, that's going to be taken care of remotely, you're also going to have a population of kids that are in school. And at various points of time, they're all going to have to be quarantining. And so are they going to just then join the remote learners? Because it's not necessarily that they're all going to be sick, right? And so I think it's, the idea is like, during, I feel like it would be, on the one hand, you can't have it all, I get it. On the one hand, it's great to have smaller class, I've got dedicated teachers for just the remote learners. But I think it would also be great if we could figure out a way where, whether it be because kids need to be quarantining or whether parents just want to pull their kid at a certain point and just be flexible, if there's a way to just kind of provide for that at the elementary school level, too, in the same way that the Pearson Plan would.
Matt, are you unmuted?
I ju, I just did. Yeah, I think an excellent point. The key is for us to all remain flexible and, you know, keep that idea in mind as we move forward. Focusing on bolstering everything we're doing with remote learning and then also providing the opportunity for, as you said, kids may come and go through the remote program, back into in-person as we move through the year. So I agree with the point, and it's definitely something we've discussed as we're building our plan.
It's a hard job, and I don't envy you for having to try to figure it out.
Yeah, I do want to make a quick point about remote learning. Because I do think that, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, I don't think COVID-19 probably recognizes state borders. And as much as I wish and hope that we don't see a resurgence in New York, my look at the rest of the world and their experiences, whether it's Australia or Israel, or within the United States, California, Texas, Florida.
Thirty-one states.
Especially California. We're likely to see a resurgence, which, which to me suggests that the remote learning program is likely going to be at some point something that everybody participates in. So what are we doing differently in planning for that this year versus last? Number one, at the middle school, high school, it will be a bell schedule. So there will be a lot more structure in terms of expectations for kids and for families. So if you're remote, you're following a bell schedule. That does have some downsides, but our experience has suggested that, now that there's time, it's a more reasonable expectation that kids adhere to that. Grades will be issued in the middle school, high school, unlike last year, which might serve to increase student motivation and perhaps family motivation. We have hired, it's, we, we've made contact, and the board's considering it, a Google trainer who's going to run pretty extensive workshops this summer for our staff. And the tentative plan, and I haven't mentioned this yet, is to have the first day for students not be Tuesday following Labor Day, but it, for it to be a week from Labor Day, which I believe is November 14th, so that we can use Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday as staff development days to really ramp up and refine our remote learning practices. Again, anticipating that at some point, regrettably during the school year, that's what we'll end up doing. And then one last comment, you know, everybody, everybody's life has sort of been turned upside down by this in unprecedented ways. Nobody could predict what would happen. I mean, I have three children. One is going to be a senior in high school, two in college, one of whom was notified three weeks ago that school was in session in California, and then was notified a week and a half ago that now it's remote. So things are changing, and I get the frustration, and I understand the concerns that all of the families have for their children, especially grades 10 through 12. So I just want to reiterate that, as much as I believed in the science putting forward the initial recommendation, I'm also cognizant of the fact, and I think the board is, that we have to listen to the community and take their input in to ultimately what we decide to do. So I'll just end with that, Brian, and, you know, feel free to open it up unless there are other questions.
Jeff, it's your go. First, yep, okay, and yours goes. And then Sandy, so your hand up. So we'll go Sandy next after yours goes, and then Chris.
Okay. So just wanted to understand a little bit better. So we did the survey, we saw the results, you know, we can review them further. How those results, are we going to use them in planning for the fall? So for example, you know, almost 25% of the participants said they're not planning to send their kids to school. Would that change your decisions, how you plan over for this academic year? So for example, you know, there was discussions about moving fifth grade up to middle school. But if we see there's enough, like, you know, space in the elementary, that would mean maybe like, we keep fifth grade in the elementary space. And then that would open up like, you know, maybe an additional grade from like middle school, high school, that could be more like full-time. So this is what I'm trying to understand. At which point are we going to get those survey results? And how like indicative are they in like, planning better for how we're going to utilize the space?
So the most important takeaways for me from the survey, and I will speak for the other administrators, couple of facts. Number one, what you just referenced, which is a significant number of families will opt to keep their, their children home. And how does that impact our ability to accommodate grades at specific schools? So in talking to Mr. Malone and Ms. Carrero, we have tentatively adjusted the model so that it's pre-K, K at the Sag Harbor Learning Center, one through five at the elementary school, and six through 12 at the middle school, high school. I will say that in all of the scenarios that we've talked about, the margins are pretty tight. So to adhere to those, even with 20% of the population choosing to keep their children home, those margins are pretty tight in terms of adhering to the guidance that the state put forward. Beyond, beyond the enrollment, the big takeaway, which was not a surprise to me, is that parents are not, are very well aware of the shortcomings of a remote learning environment. And I've said all along that it doesn't replicate what transpires each day in our classrooms. So it's not really a surprise, but the survey results reiterated that. And then lastly, it wasn't really a revelation for me, the data in terms of how 10, 12 parents felt about the idea versus K through nine parents. So that really was not, to me, a game changer. It was really those, those two other factors. And really, the first one was the one that, that could impact our thinking moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff. Sandy?
Okay, great, thanks. So in option number two, where it's two on and one remote, I've got a couple of questions about that scenario. First one is RP music. People are asking about that. Is that going to be able to be part of their schedule if they go a full day and they alternate?
The state has issued pretty specific guidance with regard to music. So the social distancing requirements for chorus, for instance, are 12 feet, not six feet, because of singing and the role that plays with transmission of the virus. So at this point, our tentative thinking is that those, those, and instrumental as well, those offerings will be diminished. Physical education, they have square footage requirements that, that pertain to that. And we will have to very much restructure what it is that physical education looks like so that we comply with the guidance that comes down from the state. But right now, Section 11 has put a hold on sports for the fall for the very same reasons that I'm talking about. I mean, we can't, we can't have a physical education class where kids are playing soccer or flag football or, or any kind of contact sport when we're really trying to adhere to the, to the social distancing requirements. The electives, to the extent that we can, we will offer them. I will say, and it's very important to make this point, that school will not look like it did pre-mid-March of last year. Classes will be consolidated, elective offerings will diminish in number. And those are just byproducts of dealing with the guidance and trying to protect our students.
And that's in all three options, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. Just because when we did the survey, it, people kind of felt a little bit that it was like if you pick for kids to come back 10th, 11th, and 12th, then they're going to lose AP and IB. But you, as a superintendent, are stating that you're going to do everything in your power to make sure that we give as many options as we can in all, all those options, correct?
Yes, I will say that, that, and I was talking to Mike Guinan about this earlier today, that the remote option 10 through 12 provides the most capability for us to have the widest array of offerings. But I would, I would underline that with the dissatisfaction that a lot of people have, students and parents, with the remote option. So on the one hand, I think it, it increases the breadth of course offerings because it provides more flexibility, because I don't have to think about social distancing.
Right.
People are unhappy in other ways with that option.
Okay. And then my other question is, what if you have a child who's got a 504? How do they fit into the second and third plans?
Thank you for mentioning that. I should have mentioned that. So it's not necessarily 504, but I think.
IAPs.
Yeah, students who are classified special education in our ENL. Yeah, students who are classified special education and are ENL students. So both of those portions of the student population will receive in-service. In-service, in-service is the wrong word, in-person teaching. So they'll be coming to school more frequently than our regular education population. So our special ed population will likely be in on a regular basis. And the ENL population, based on the initial assessment in terms of what drives their services, will likely be in more as well. And that comes directly from the state.
Okay. I hate to ask this question, but so if we're not going to be having music or anything else, what do those, what, what happens to the staff?
So they get repurposed. So in all of these scenarios, there's going to have to be great flexibility to utilize staff in different ways.
Okay.
Because again, the, the day is going to look differently and all school districts are going to be charged or faced with the same challenges or similar challenges. So I could foresee, like at the elementary school, having certain teachers, I don't want to speak for Matt, with areas of expertise where they're, that are not necessarily congruent with what they're asked to do, but they're going to have to, they're going to have to learn and adapt. Because he's going to have to have staff members redeployed to meet the remote learning program. Or he may have to put them in classes and redeploy people who were supposed to be in classes to address the remote learning need. And at that middle school, high school, we can have physical education teachers, home and career teachers, other elective teachers assisting with core classes.
Okay.
All looking at the, the third option, we had condensed the schedule to a, to a four-period day. And in doing that, we were going to have to have larger class, larger classes upwards of 35 or 40 in alternate spaces like the cafeteria or the gymnasium or the auditorium. And in doing that, we're going to have to have additional staff in those settings assisting with instruction. So again, I think people will be repurposed.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. And then one last question. Because I, I knew that we would figure out the 10th, 11th and 12th, one way or the other, we'd get them in-person training. So I'm going to go back to what you said before. I do believe at some point during this year, we're going to have to go to distance learning. And obviously we've seen that it didn't work for the majority of, of people, especially in the high school at this point. So you said that you're offering seminars during the summer right now? And our teachers are taking advantage of that?
Well, we're, we're just, we're just about to roll it out. It's on, the approval for the trainer is on a board agenda.
Okay.
You know, there was a community member who, who graciously offered his assistance in setting us up with this person. And anyway, it's, it's.
My son-in-law turned for him, so yeah. Okay, all right. And then I had one last one, I'm sorry, sorry, Brian.
You're just taking away from Chris, so.
I'm sorry.
And then Alex and everybody else, no teasing.
I'm good.
Just kidding, no, seriously. But why don't you take a second, Sandy, Chris, go ahead and then we'll come back to you, Sandy and any other, other board members.
All right, thanks so much. I want to thank the administrators for coming up with new scenarios. As you know, I was not happy with the original one, but I understand the logic behind its original presentation. I, I've looked at at least 15 to 20 plans from other districts on Long Island and not one of them had high schoolers all remote while the rest of the population was going to be there in person. So I applaud us coming up with a hybrid model here. I have a couple of questions about it. So one is, and this plays on to, I'm asking like a part B to a question that Sandy asked. I checked the survey results and a third of, I believe this is accurate, a third of the elementary school parents said that even if we were offering in, in-school instruction, they would opt to keep their children remote. So that's a third. So if you do the math, unless I, now it was a smaller percentage of the entire, but for, for the elementary school, it was a third. If that's the case, it sounds like that's opening up a lot of space. And I'm just wondering if we can, on option two, get kids in more often? Because I see that Monday and Tuesday is group one, Thursday and Friday is group two and Wednesday is remote. And I would just challenge us that if we can get them in, even if it's a rotation of, of, of the kids on that Wednesday, to just every day that they're in school and they're not remote, they're more likely to learn. We know that we have technology problems that the school district cannot solve. In my neighborhood, we were out of power for four hours last week during the school. We, we went into school week, we were out of power yesterday for four hours. People have internet connection issues that we're not going to be able to solve for them. And I think it's not going to get any easier when everybody has to be on in a bell schedule. You've got several kids in your house, it's going to be a struggle to be able to, for them to dial in. So I would just really challenge us to go even further on option two and figure out more time for the high schoolers in the building. That would be my request.
Before you go on though, I want to answer that. So in our original thinking, we had, as Yorgis mentioned, moved the fifth grade to the middle school, high school. And over the last week, in anticipation of the opt-out at the elementary roughly being 25%, not 35%, we had moved them back. So even at that number, 35%, the margins are still very tight. So as much as I understand your desire to encourage us to try to get more. I would caution you against just making that statement absent a thorough knowledge of the numbers like the administrators have. So that's, that's my point. Go on, please.
Yeah, you know, and I guess the other, the other, and you know, this is, this may be blasphemy. I don't know if we can have slightly longer days then to accommodate more. I know that we have contractual issues, but I'm just trying to figure out how we cover more ground in person. Because if it's only two days out of five that they're in school, then that means, that means that 60% of the instruction is going to be remote. And that just makes me nervous. Because you know, as, as much training as we do, I can't imagine that that's going to have the same positive impact, both academically and emotionally for the kids. So I think that, that's it for me right now.
Sandy?
Oh, no, Alex, go, Alex go.
Well, Alex will let you go, go ahead. We'll come back, we'll finish. So I want to get to the public as soon as we can.
All right, just one more question. Last meeting, we had a, a person talk about cameras for when the kids aren't in school. If we went to AB days or, or whatever, or even for kids who are going to be home remote learning. So I think it follow the classroom. Have you done any research on that? Because I really, really, really like that idea, but it might have pluses and minuses.
So, so actually, a community member, Helen Rousell, brought that to our attention program. And we did, Mr. Fisher did some research. So a couple of issues, number one, you have the prices for that and it's somewhat prohibitive. But you know, these are interesting times. But the other consideration is that some districts, and I want to put this out there, some districts have, and when I say districts, the teachers' associations in districts have pushed back against the notion of live streaming for privacy concerns and, and unions have made an issue out of it. Our teaching union has not, but to date. But what you're talking about, the programs are where the camera follows the teacher at all times, which makes it potentially more of an ask on the part of the teachers' unions, whether it's in Sag Harbor or elsewhere to agree to that. So Mr. Fisher, I think you had a sum total on that option. It was roughly like what, just shy of around 2,000 per classroom?
Yeah, that's a very rough estimate. I can get you the exact numbers, but that's about right. So when we did the math, expanded out to multiple classrooms, obviously that becomes very costly.
Yeah, hundreds of thousands. The other option, which is, would be to have a camera set up with a, with a, with a set angle in the classroom and that's what the students follow. And big picture, as it relates to what most districts are doing, that would be pretty positive if we were able to do that versus compared to what other districts are wrestling with.
Okay, I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I just had sort of a follow-up procedure question. Because I think if you're talking about perhaps opening the week after Labor Day, you know, that's, that's a long time from now in the COVID world and things are likely to change quite a bit. So what, what sort of flexibility are you going to have if you post these three options next week or on the 31st? You know, what kind of flexibility are you going to have to change that if we learn more or the circumstances change? You know, August 15th or August 30th or the week before school opens?
So let me answer it in a couple of ways. First, I'll just note the guidance that the governor has issued, which is that if, if infection rates or positive test rates rise above 5% prior to August 1st, he will make a decision to shut schools. After August 1st, that number, for whatever reason, I'm not sure why, rises to 9%. So if we get it up above 9%, then he will shut schools. That's a starting point. I've consulted with our attorneys regarding what's, what's the flexibility? What is the flexibility that schools have with regard to making decisions as to adjusting what schooling looks like due to COVID? And the answer is that short of an absolute closure, which means that we decide that nobody goes to school, special ed, ENL, nobody. Short of that, we have freedom to do, freedom to adjust on the fly. So the only thing we're prohibited from doing is an absolute closure. That has to come from the governor. So theoretically, if, if we see things worsening and we decide on August 27th that we're uncomfortable with what we think we're going to do September 14th, we could move to a different scenario without violating any state protocols or guidance.
Because to me, that's a really critical piece because, you know, and you guys have done, you know, echo what Chris has said and commend everyone for all the work that's been done. But you know, we're trying to make decisions now based on the current understanding of transmission and infection. And that understanding might change a lot in the next few weeks and we might learn a lot more. So it sounds like we'll have the ability to change those plans, maybe in a, maybe in a good way, based on whatever comes forward. So that, that's good, to me, that's good to hear.
I would just echo that not only, you know, will we need flexibility, like within the three plans, but right, so like the 25% of elementary school parents who are thinking of keeping their kids at home, if all of a sudden there's reliable rapid testing, they might be willing to send their kids to school. So that also changes our numbers and then, you know, you might, there might be further adjustments beyond options one through three that we need to consider.
And then there's that option, which I hope doesn't happen. But if the state comes down and closes us, then we're back to that option that we need to be prepared for as well. So there's a lot of, you know, planning that needs to be done, so.
Agreed.
If there's no other board questions, thank you for the presentations. I would like to, to hear from the public as it's, you know, it's, it's almost eight. So I, I think if we can, unless there's a board question now, or we can ask questions after as well. I just would like to get, getting later in the evening, I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay.
All right, Scott, if we could start opening it up based on what you have?
Yeah, so first we're going to go with, we're going to go back to Chase, making a statement.
Very good.
Hello, everyone. There's been a lot of speculation in the community about where TASH stands on reopening. So I'd like to clear up some of that by reading a statement that was just crafted today. TASH understands the importance of in-person instruction and prioritizing the social and emotional well-being of students. We're eager to see all students return to school, but can only support doing so safely in accordance with Department of Health guidelines and the recommendations of our nation's public health experts. As such, we're urging the district to ensure the following. Number one, that masks are worn at all times while students are on the bus, in hallways and seated in class to minimize the risk of transmission of a virus that some public health officials have deemed to be airborne in its behavior. We understand that mask breaks will be needed and that this may be difficult for our youngest learners and some of our students with special needs. We are asking for teacher discretion to provide for flexibility in situations where exceptions are appropriate. Number two, students in all classes be co-horted into groups of no more than 12 students whenever feasible to minimize the risk of transmission. Three, that portable HEPA filters are purchased for all classes. Four, that personal protective equipment is provided for teachers who work in certain contexts that make them more at risk of exposure. And finally, number five, that at-risk teachers and teachers with immediate family members in their household who are at risk have the opportunity to teach remotely to ensure their safety. Thank you for allowing us to make that statement.
Okay, so next we're going to move on to Mr. Kinnear in a second. Okay, Jim, you have to unmute yourself and then you can talk.
Hi, Jim Kinnear. TASH president, high school math teacher. Stating the obvious, I'm not a scientist, a doctor or some other expert. I am pretty well informed, but not an expert. And I realize that this is as tough as a situation gets. Nobody has a crystal ball, no matter what choices are made now. And what happens in the future, there will be criticism. When I was young, I was taught that the fastest way to do anything is to do it correctly the first time. Every meeting I've attended regarding this, Superintendent Nichols has started out every meeting by saying, if we bring students and teachers back into the building, the infection rate and the transmission rate will increase, tonight included. If we all seek to resume some level of normalcy, combine the last two statements. I propose as fact that if students and teachers are brought back into the building, we delay normalcy. As a math teacher, there is nothing more than I want than to get back in the classroom. Teaching remotely in the spring did not go well.
Nope.
But I am conflicted. I think of one or two, or one or more living individuals who could die because we reopen. I realize that this is not certain, but it is possible. I also realize that if we don't go back, that some students will experience depression and stress. I think there are safe ways to alleviate these. This genuineism. Is reopening worth this? As a result, I think the best way and fastest way to move forward toward normalcy is to start the year remotely. I realize that it's not an option that you've proposed. Vaccine testing is ahead of schedule and it's not a promise, but it's possible that a vaccine will be ready by winter. If we do reopen, I implore you to take the most caution, cautious approach. If there is a way to thread the needle to reopen and remain open, we need to take the most cautious approach. Look at the states that have opened too soon and too much. Those states have gone immeasurably backwards. Whatever choice you make, we request that the board support the administration and teachers in enforcing the rules and the standards to which it is to safely open school. Look at baseball, Major League Baseball at present. These players have millions of dollars as incentive to keep away from each other and yet they don't. What will students do that don't have this incentive? The consequences affect all ages. Again, in Major League Baseball.
Jim, not, not to cut you off, just, we have the three-minute clocks, if you could just wrap up.
All right.
Your comment, just, just, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Back in March, I sided with the Sag Harbor School Board, not, and not the teachers' union at state level. There was pressure not to cooperate. I listened to many voices, soft, moderate and loud. I cooperated with you because I thought you were right and you were. I listened to you not because you were the loudest, but because I thought you were right. I urge you to once again, do what you think is best regardless of the volume. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move to other members from the public, Heather Harston.
Hi, Heather.
Yes, good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
We can. Just a reminder, as for you and everybody, we have a three-minute for public comment and once you start speaking. We can. Just a reminder, as for you and everybody, we have a three minute for public comment and once you start speaking.
Got it. Um, good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Hartstein. I have five children in this district. Four of them are in school. They range in age kindergarten to 10th grade. I have, my, my mind is obviously reeling, but here's my three minutes. I keep hearing people, I keep hearing, um, Superintendent Nichols reference guidance versus requirements, guidance versus requirements. Part one to my four-part question is, what does that mean? I mean, is this law or do we get to, do you get to make your own decisions as schools about specifically what is being handed down? For example, when you reference the above 5% rate and, you know, before the first of August and after, what are we at now? Because I, I, I thought we were close to about 1.5. So I, I'm, I'm curious about what that actually means, guidance versus requirements. Number two, mask policy. I'm horrified. I'm horrified to hear the task force talk about required masks for every kid. One of my children has Down syndrome. There are many kids with special needs in this district. If my child's, not only will my child not wear a mask for any amount of time, his life experience is based upon his ability to look at the faces of the people that surround him. His vivid experience inside the Sag Harbor inclusive environment has been completely and utterly successful as a result of the social interactions that he has been able to obtain. The idea that we can require special needs kids to wear masks is ludicrous and does not allow them to learn. They need to see the faces of the people around them. Point three, social distancing in school, specifically for me, this is elementary. I have a, a, a kid coming into kindergarten. I'm wondering if we are expecting five-year-olds to socially distance all day long? It's not viable. How are we going to handle that? Uh, point, uh, the last point i- is basically in reference to the fact that, you know, everyone keeps saying, we're likely going to be all remote at some point. That's likely going to happen, going to happen. My question is, what will dictate this decision? Whether, you know, will that be New York State and Governor Cuomo saying, you're going remote? Or is that going to be a decision made by, you know, by whom? Those are my four points. I hope I made it in my minutes.
Yeah, you did.
You know what? Because I have like 10 seconds left, I just want to say that I am in utter support of Sag Harbor, of the job you have all done. You're amazing. I cannot imagine what the task force has had to do, what you've all had to do. There are so many different and varying needs here. You know, my oldest kid is in 10th grade. I'm horrified at the, at the, the prospect of him being stuck in front of a computer screen. You know, they don't, they just, they don't learn as well. So I, I, I just wanted to say thank you to, to all of you for all that you're doing. I know that everyone is trying their best.
Thank you. You're muted.
Brian, you want to keep going with, with public input?
I could, if you want me to speak to this, I can. If you want to go on, I'm.
I, I think it's important, Jeff, just because I think other people may have the same questions as to what the difference is. And that may answer people's questions, uh, that may not have the same question later.
So the, the first point about guidance versus, um, like law. So the state has issued guidance that we're expected to follow. They're not going to be sending police to the buildings to enforce it, but things like, um, a six-foot, uh, social distance space, things like, uh, wearing masks. And I'll get to, to, to the second point about masks in a minute, but wearing masks, uh, when you're within six feet of somebody, uh, that, that's pretty, that's guidance that we have to follow. With regard to the masks, um, for students who it creates an issue for, special need students, there are provisions, uh, in the guidance that provide for flexibility. So, um, Heather talked about, um, one of her children, that mask would be problematic. There are, um, there are ways to navigate around that through utilizing, uh, face masks, like shields and things like that, where we can see, um, facial expressions, which play a big role, in, uh, in a student's education. Dr. Mears, if you're on the line, if you want to chime in real quickly about that, I know we talked about that this past week. Dr. Mears? Maybe she can't unmute. Uh, so in any case, uh, that is the answer to, to question number two or the issue number two, social distancing with regard to five-year-olds. I get what Heather said and, uh, we're just going to do the best we can to make sure that we adhere to it. Is it a challenge to keep five-year-olds apart at all times? Absolutely. And is it a challenge that's specific to Sag Harbor? Uh, no, all districts are going to be facing the same challenge. And then ultimately with regard to the, to the shutting down of schools, with regard to the 5% and the 9%, that's strictly a governor's decision. So if the governor decides to shut down schools, he issues an executive order and we comply. What I said with regard to Alex's question before is that we have flexibility as a district to alter our remote learning format, um, short of a closure, we, we can alter it any way we want. So there is flexibility, um, for each and every district. But ultimately the decision as to close entirely is made by the governor, not the local school districts.
Okay. So we're going.
Thank you.
Move on next to Rod Richardson.
Rod, are you there?
Rod, you need to unmute.
Mute. Hey, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Very good. Um, thank you very much. Thank you very much, all of you, for the amazing job you're, uh, doing, trying to figure all this out. It, it must be mind-numbingly complicated to think through all the variables. I did want to, uh, say that for us, for our family, uh, remote learning was a disaster. So we're very, uh, pleased to see any options that, uh, bring students back to school, like options, uh, you know, two and three. You know, I, I hope you guys can also figure out how to maintain the IB and the AP classes. And, you know, I wonder if you've considered, uh, options like, uh, you know, you, you mentioned in the last meeting how difficult it was to cohort, uh, students, uh, for these classes. But, you know, maybe if the class seating were broken up so that you could have little clumps of cohorts, uh, sitting around, uh, you know, and, and then if you're doing it on a, you know, twice a week schedule or, or something like that, the students that are there can, you know, help live stream for the kids that are not. But in any event, uh, I, I, I hope, um, you guys, you know, one of the things that struck me last week, and I, I don't know if, if, uh, this was addressed earlier, I, I couldn't get into the meeting earlier, but, um, you know, one of the things that was said that struck me as, as a little bit wrong was that, there was a lot of reference to a South Korean study where, uh, you know, it was felt that the risks would be less for kids that were, you know, zero to nine than for kids that were from, uh, you know, uh, 10 to 19. Uh, you know, I just wanted to point out that, that I looked at the study and that was a study done in lockdown. So, you know, how those kids transmitted infection while in lockdown is going to be very different from how those kids might transmit infection once schools reopen. You know, the, the smaller kids might've actually been easier to control in lockdown. Uh, you know, so you might see a difference in their behavior once you get them together back in school. The, the older kids in lockdown might've been doing things illicitly, like sneaking out and seeing their friends. In school, you might actually be able to control them better, uh, than they were controlled during lockdown. And you'd see their infections rate fall. So I'm not sure that, that, you know, that was, you know, really science-based as a, you know, and, and there's, there's things that cut the other way, such as, you know, I, I put on your chat, the, uh, advice from the, uh, American Academy of Pediatrics that really recommends, um, in-person, in-classroom learning if at all possible. And I think, uh, you know, I think if I, if I'm reading it correctly, the mental health of the students is an important consideration. Uh, in any event, uh, I, I hope you weigh those and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, next we are going to, let's see, move on to Rochelle. Rochelle?
Yes.
Please tell us why, uh, why you're here. Uh, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, um, first of all, I feel, I'm kind of really shocked that so many people want to send their kids back to school at this time in person. And I just want to know that what, what's the procedure for when a student or a teacher comes down with the virus? Because there is going to be a surge of this. What, what happens then? And also I have two students with IEPs and I feel like saying that they have to go every day. It's, it's almost like they're the sacrificial lambs or something. It's, it's very, it's very upsetting to me. And, and the remote learning, it was a disaster because it, the teachers weren't teaching the classes. I mean, my son was like, I watch a video and then I'm, I do the work and it, that's, that was ridiculous. So I just want to know what's going to happen? What's going to happen when a student gets it? When a teacher gets it? What's going to happen? What's the procedure?
So those, those procedures are outlined by the Department of Health, uh, and how we're to proceed with that? That's not an internal, uh, discussion or determination, if you will?
But if someone gets it, does the school close or just the classroom and everyone else keeps going?
So the, the answer to the question is, am I unmuted? Yes. In the event that a child tests positive for COVID-19 and notifies the school, the school's been instructed to report it to the Department of Health. Then it's up to the Department of Health, not the school, to give the direction on who gets notified and in what capacity. But the, um, specific guidance that we've received from the Department of Health and our council has reviewed that guidance and that's what we're supposed to stick with.
So there's no plan? There's no.
Nothing beyond what I just said, we're required to do.
So how is that safe?
Well, it's a good question. A good question.
But my students are, are required to come every day and I feel like I'm being forced to do that. Because if I keep my students out, then what? Because the way my husband and I feel is that, so what if they miss a year of school? Just let them continue on the next year. Is that something that's possible?
Yeah, I think there's some flexibility with regard to that. The guidance with regard to special ed services was, uh, in recognition that some of those students have, uh, services that would, um, that would require in-person, uh, support. But if, Dr. Mears, are you on the line now? Do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Is my audio working now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Sorry, I had to leave the meeting and come back. So I apologize for that earlier. Uh, yes, just in response and thank you, Mr. Nichols and good evening, everyone. Um, in response to that, what we're really looking at is those students with intensive special education needs and it would be an option for, uh, daily in, in person. We do have some students that really need to be in-person for instruction. And typically those students who require special class settings, such as an eight to one-to-one or a 12 to one-to-one. Um, and that would be the same for those students who require some more direct support for, um, E and L services. So it would be an option, not a mandate.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Uh, Dr. Mears, do you want to just take a second to, uh, elaborate on the response, uh, to Heather about face coverings? Students with special needs who, who wearing those face coverings would interfere with their learning?
Sure, Ms. Nichols. I think, um, some of the considerations we need to make is a lot of times, and, and this is just for all students. So we rely heavily on facial expressions in order to communicate. And some of our students that have auditory processing delays or any other concerns with interpreting, um, as far as hearing impairments, um, they focus on lip reading, they need some clear masks. So there's one, one consideration is clear face mask or the ability to have a clear window in order to see facial expressions. And the other is those students who have mental health concerns that feel claustrophobic with a, with a face mask. So anytime we have a student with a special need, regardless of what that is, we can make individual determinations, um, as far as whether or not we're going to require that facial mask. So again, we were encouraging all students to wear face masks if they, if appropriate, but we have the option of making exceptions for students where that may not make sense.
Thank you. Scott?
Okay. So next we're going to go to Megan Schmidt.
Okay. Megan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. Just state your name for the record and then you have three minutes.
Sure. So Megan Schmidt on 57 Ridge Road West. Um, I really appreciate what everyone's doing here. I don't want to take up time with that. But I just had a qu- uh, two questions. Um, if families choose to opt for all remote learning this year, should we assume that that's a decision we need to embrace for the entire year, um, in the worst case scenario? And my other question, which is separate, is if sports, um, my child's a middle schooler. If the sports and, um, extracurriculars do open in the winter and the spring, is that something that's going to be made available to remote learners to participate in? As opposed to just kids who are in class instruction?
So I'll answer, uh, both, both questions. The, the first is that, um, we, uh, at this point see, uh, we would like to see the ability of families to make decisions as to whether or not their children is in, is studying remotely or in school as a fluid dynamic where they could go back and forth depending on the conditions locally. So making a decision now doesn't, doesn't, um, obligate you to follow one model for the entire year. Um, you would have flexibility in that regard. Regarding Section 11 athletics, I don't want to give you a, 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 um, an answer that's set in stone. I know that, uh, homeschooling students are not permitted to, to participate in Section 11 sports. My suspicion, and I will confirm this and you can check with me in a day or two, is that, um, the COVID guidance will allow students who are studying remotely or participating in the regular school program, which you would be doing, uh, to participate in sports, should that, uh, come to fruition at some point later in the year. But I will get a definitive answer for you and if you email me, I can get back to you in the next day or so.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
Scott?
Give me one second here. Okay. So it looks like, uh, Thomas McEarl is up.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
I'm unmuted. Uh, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's all well.
Tom, just give us your name only and you have three minutes.
Thomas McEarl, 17 Oak Lane, Sag Harbor. I, uh, I, I, I don't want to repeat myself, but, um, you know, I'm hearing some complaints about the remote learning, which are probably valid. Uh, last week I gave you the, the, the skinny on, you know, my son, uh, doing remote learning and he actually benefited from it. So my only comment about remote learning is, you know, we got thrown a curve ball. We had to shut down the school and, uh, I'm, I'm really confident that we can only get better at it. So, um, I, I'm sure that, I'm sure that you're on top of that already. You know, how can we improve it, um, so some of the community members can be, uh, a little bit more assured positively? My second, uh, comment is actually, uh, a question is, uh, Mr. Nichols or Mr. Malone, do you know, there's, uh, the uptick in enrollments this year in the community? And, uh, Sag Harbor School District?
So right now, um, resident, new resident, uh, enrollees is north of 40 in the district. And I anticipate that that will continue to go up. And then we have, um, north of 35 inquiries related to tuition pay.
Right. And my, my last concern is, you know, I, I've known Mr. Kinnear since, I don't know, 30 years. And I heard Mr. Malia, I heard what they read and it was excellent. But I was just wondering on a, on a personal basis for the teachers, how they feel about coming into the school with children actually being carriers and don't even know it. Maybe I can reach out to them and ask them how the teachers are concerned about themselves getting the COVID themselves. I'm sure there's some concerns. I saw some retirements this year and I don't know if they're related to people that were concerned about getting it. And you know, they've already passed their time where they can get their pensions and stuff like that. So I was just wondering if, if, if you're, you're hearing anything from the teachers, you know, valid concerns about them coming into school. You know, the students are a priority, but so are the teachers. So that, that's my only question for the night. So I only got a couple of seconds, but thank you for what you all are doing. And I'm going to get off so somebody can get on from YouTube. So.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, can I?
Okay, Scott?
Okay, so next up we have Marina Katolos. Marina?
Marina, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening.
Very good. Just, just tell us your name only and then you have three minutes.
Marina Katolos, 20 Lincoln Street. My questions, I have three of them and they're quick. My one concern is I know some other school districts have stated that their children are not going to use pencils or paper at all during the day. I have a daughter in elementary school and part of the main reason I'm sending her back is so that she can actually go back to using pencils or paper and not sit on technology all day. Has this been discussed at all? Another concern that I know a lot of parents have and it's already been discussed is the mask wearing. And is that going to be, I know task said that they are supportive of it being used at seat time. And so maybe this is a redundant question at this point, but will it be mandatory at seat time? Is this something that they're looking, is it open to discussion? Maybe that policy can be changed. While they're actively sitting at their seats and doing work, do they need to wear the mask? And then number three, how or what will recess look like? How will recess be modified for elementary school students?
Seems like those three questions pertain to the elementary schools. So Mr. Malone, do you want to chime in? I, I can weigh in on the masks after you, you answer the yes and pencil paper issue.
Yeah.
Sure. So Ms. Katolos' question regarding the use of computers. I, I do not see us moving away from our philosophy with computers that we've held all along, which is that they're a wonderful tool and we want children to be adept at using them. But we want to keep, keep things in perspective and let them learn through the various modalities, which they can find success. And that was even apparent with our approach with remote learning this past spring. And it will stay true with our remote learning this fall that we worked hard. Obviously, it had to have the computers as the base, but we all worked very hard to provide other learning opportunities and that, and that will continue. With regards to recess and just very quickly, the impetus between, behind the original proposal was to really maximize the available space for not just the cohorting in the classrooms for the academic instruction, but also to provide us with as much flexibility as we could have. So we're going to hold true to believing that recess is very important as well as any other physical activity and do our best to make that happen every day.
So they'll still go outside?
Weather permitting, we will definitely be outside and we may even ask all to buy some nice raincoats and heavy jackets if needed.
Good. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Malone.
And then related to the mask issue, you referenced the guidance that comes down from the state or came down from the state, which says that students are supposed to wear masks on the bus. And then they're supposed to, or are mandated to wear masks in school when they're within six feet of somebody else. The state leaves the discretion to the district once they're seated as to whether or not they're to wear the masks or not. And I don't think we're going to make a decision about that tonight, but I think that the issue is still under discussion.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, before we proceed, I've, I've seen a few folks have reached out to me on the side who are watching the live stream and wanting to know how they ask questions. So I think someone else had posted something about emailing you to your board email. If you want that to be the way, then maybe you want to announce it on here so that everybody has it and that they can try to participate.
Yeah, so Scott did put that message out and he said anybody that's not able to log in to send it to the Board of Education, the group emails so that all board members see the comments.
Right, but if they have questions that they want answered in this meeting, I think that's what, that's what folks are asking. Is they, is there a way that they can ask questions since they can't participate live, you know, in, in this Zoom setting?
Well, there's, there is room for people to log in now. Just to put out there on the live, we're, we're down to, we're down on participants so people can switch over because people are logging out after they talk. I would ask them to log in. It's a challenge to read emails and pay attention to the meeting. Just, so I, I don't want to miss the meeting while reading emails. So I agree, it's a good point, Chris. I would just say, keep trying to log in if you want to ask a live question. Otherwise, please email the board and then we can get back to you after the meeting.
Or put it in the chat. Oh, they're not on, remember?
They can't log in.
They can't, they can't put it in the chat.
There's, there's room for 10 people on right now.
Correct, so 10 people log in.
Thank you for announcing that.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And Scott, next person.
Okay, Wendy Flanagan.
Wendy, can you hear us?
Hi, this is Jay Flanagan. I've locked Wendy in the closet and hijacked her account.
Hey, Jay, can you just give us your name only and then you have three minutes?
Thank you very much. Jay Flanagan. I, last year I had a senior and a freshman in school. A few things. First of all, thank you all for your work. This is not an enviable position and is a mountain, too steep to climb. I think if I were to just try to impose any notion, it would be to create a routine for all age groups and all grades throughout the district. I think, I'm not a psychologist, but knowing what to expect every day brings comfort in times that don't offer a lot. And that routine is very liberating for kids that haven't had it for a long time. I think if the school district was to accomplish two things, it would be to, to create routine. We all have to change our expectations, right? We're trying to stick some, a round peg in a square hole and we have to change our expectations. If you can accomplish routine and physical activity with some sort of social gathering while crossing Ts and dotting Is, I think that would be a really big win at the very least for the next four months of, of school if we open in September. That's just one observation and point. Two, again, as a parent with a senior and a, and a freshman last year, online learning was an abject failure. Besides the fact that my kids worked really hard at what they were exposed to, their grades were an average of the first two quarters of the year. And that was demoralizing and it was, it was terrible. I'll just leave it at that. Moving along. I respectfully think a lot of my children and their, and their opinions. But I think in this instance, where in life and death, economics, jobs, safety are its play, having children weigh in on this scenario is entirely inappropriate. I think parents' opinions should be informed by conversations that they're having with their children. But in no means should children be weighing in on this type of severe situation. 17-year-olds, the last time I checked, are going to live forever and know everything. So I, I think that is a really misguided avenue to travel down in a, in a, on a path that requires so much maturity and sober thought. So that's it. And again, I just want to reiterate all the efforts by everybody. And I think it's amazing and wonderful and really challenging. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, second here. All right, so Helen Rousseau, you're up. Helen, can you hear us?
Hello?
There you go.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
No, I can't hear anything. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you, Helen. Please state your name only.
Thank you so much. It's Helen Rousseau and thank you so much for all your hard work. I've, I've felt really a lot better after hearing the options that you laid out. And my concern is the safety of the facility, though. And I love the options and that they're really great and everything, but I feel like more planning. And I mean, a lot of things have to be going on sort of simultaneously. So the schedules, the education part, there's so many sort of moving parts. Particularly, you know, how to make the school safe for everybody. And the number one, you know, looking at the science, we need to talk about, you know, filtration systems. We need to talk about, you know, for, for instance, I just want to go back to the synchronous learning. And that technology that you mentioned earlier on, it can actually be shared with the teachers. The teachers can share it between them. There may not be a lot of teachers that, you know, want to use it, but they, there may be a good handful that do and they can share the technology. So it, it doesn't have to be installed in every classroom or anything like that. Okay, so that's the, the educational part and that would solve a lot of problems, that technology. But the other thing was is really to make the facility safe by using, you know, high-grade HEPA filters and especially by, you know, using them in every single classroom and in the hallways. And, you know, there just needs to be a lot of work around the building about making the building safe if we're going to have all these people in the building. And the other thing is that I wanted to say is I hear about what we're required to do. And I would just like to push for us to do, to use the science. We don't have to just go by, we can just be smart. We can think out of the box. You know, we can have volunteers, you know, and I heard the conversation earlier about, you know, if somebody comes down with COVID, you know, what do you do? And the answer was, well, we report it to the government. Well, I say, well, we don't have to just do that. You know, we could have a, we could do our own track and trace and stuff like that. You know, because people need to know, people need to know what's going on because then they can isolate. If you have a group of, you know, one of your cohorts and somebody there has symptoms, well, you could have infected 12 people. Those 12 people need to know. They need to know, the teacher needs to know what's going on. And I think it would be unfair just to say, ah, we'll just report it to the government. No. I, I, we don't need to do that. You could get a group of volunteers to do the tracking and tracing and, and looking at this so that, so that we can, you know, quarantine people, we can isolate people. Otherwise, if we're just calling the government, what are they doing? Coming, carrying on coming to school? You know, the people that they could have possibly infected. Yeah, so things like the science isn't mainstream for the, the bathrooms. We know that viruses can be spread through aerosols in the bathrooms when you. So I mean, getting down to the, the nitty gritty, you know, the things that people don't want to talk about, we have to talk about it because this is about funding as well. We have to put the funding on the table. We have to look at the numbers because it's going to cost to keep everybody safe in that building. And unless you are, you know, I, I don't, I, you know, personally, I couldn't bring my children to school there unless you're, you know, looking at really good safety standards within the facility. And thanks, everybody, though. Thanks for listening and thanks for your hard work.
Thank you. And I believe, Jeff, that facilities, Paul is looking into all of those things. If you want to give a brief update on that before the next question.
Well, two updates. Number one, Paul Wilkin, the Director of Facilities, has ordered air filters, some with ultraviolet light and the filters that Helen references. And a lot of those are backordered, but he also has made arrangements to order just devices with the filters and not the ultraviolet light. We'd like to get both. Paul has a background in HVAC, so this is sort of an area of expertise of his. And I'll have him provide a pretty thorough update to the board at the next meeting. And then regarding Helen's point about contract tracing, it's not simply a matter, and I can understand why she thinks this, it's not a matter of us choosing to just contact the government and leave it to them. We're restricted by privacy laws that prohibit us from engaging in the contract tracing and notification that she references. So it's, it's not really an option. It's, it's more what we're required to do legally.
Thank you. Scott?
Okay, Liz Sarazinsky, you're up.
Okay, Liz, are you there?
I am here. Good evening.
Just give us your name only. You have three minutes. Unfortunately, the clock doesn't come up, but our clerk is keeping track of that. Please tell us why you're here.
Okay, my name is Liz Sarazinsky and I am currently a fourth grade teacher in Sag Harbor Elementary School. I've been in the school district for 22 years. I wish to first thank the task force and the Board of Ed for all of your hard efforts through this incredible daunting journey that we've had, starting back in March to present day. Speaking of back in March, I just want to go back to that time where we were the first district to close with the mindset of the health and safety of our students and our staff. I remember having a conversation with my principal, Mr. Malone, about how my own children's administration told me when I wanted to pull my kids on that same day that we closed, that I was overreacting and that Sag Harbor was overreacting. We've been closed for months. With the state tight timeline, I would like to just keep our mindset the same as we did back in March and to continue with the thought that the safety and health of our students and our staff be at the forefront of any thoughts that we have for opening in the fall. I reiterate Jim's point to start the year remote or with the most cautious plan feasible for not only the students, but the staff, the administration and the community who will be entering the school buildings. And I wish you to take the time to do that correctly. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Jeff, is there anything we want to add from you or Matt or the administration or should we move on to the next question?
I think she summarized her thoughts pretty concisely. I think we can move on.
Very good. Scott?
Tracy Mitchell is up next.
Hi, Tracy, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you, Brian. I'm Tracy Mitchell and I'll be brief. First, let me thank you all. As everyone has said, I think you're doing an incredible job trying to field your way through a minefield. That said, I also want to echo Jay's comments about routine. I think it's critical if it's safe to do. And I also wanted to reiterate something that Susan Lamontaine put in the chat, which was about maintaining a small number of kids that are 10 to 12 in, for in-person instruction, some kind of option like that that would work certainly for the older kids. I have a daughter who's a senior and in the IB program. And I have a very specific question that seemed not to be answered unless I missed it in the options that were provided, options two and option three. Is the intent to be able to have a full IB diploma program? And if not, in either of those scenarios, is there, are we to assume then that the children would not? are we to assume then that the children would not be able to receive the IB diploma because they would not be prepared for testing? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so the, the, the answer to the question is that in scenario number one, we meet the hour requirement that IB stipulates. Scenario number two, a little bit more challenging. But if it's a combination of remote and regular instruction, we also meet the IB hour requirement. Option number three is problematic to the extent that we would not accumulate the necessary hours that the IB stipulates that you have to have in standard level and higher level courses. So the one qualifier would say is that the International Baccalaureate Organization is wrestling with this time requirement, not only with Sag Harbor, but I would suspect with schools throughout the world that are wrestling with the same dynamic that we are. So although I'm hopeful that they'll issue guidance that provides flexibility to schools related to the hour requirement, right now, the, the black and white answer is that we can only assure adherence in scenarios one and two.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Scott?
Looks like we have one, one last person looking to speak. Larry Balls, go ahead.
Larry, can you hear us? Larry?
How about now? I have to hold my.
Just give us your name only, Larry, and then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Larry Balls is my name. I want to thank all of you for everything that you've done. I recognize fully that none of you, teachers, administrators, board members, signed up for this. This is not probably what you ever expected to be doing in your careers. A lot has been said about following the science. And I think as we get further along in this process, we're beginning to understand that we really don't know a whole lot about this virus, whether it's the short-term effects or the long-term effects. I do think that we've got a pretty good idea that it's airborne. I think just considering more than the students is very important. I think in most communities, the schools are going to be the largest grouping where multiple members from different families will be commingling with one another. And I believe that the chance for spread in the school is going to exponentially increase the chance for spread in the larger community. And I worry about what ramifications that will have overall and how we can move forward with any of this stuff. And it occurs to me that perhaps our efforts would be better off focusing on remote learning and improving remote learning now because I don't see a way, I'm skeptical that we're going to be able to move forward without the school being continuously interrupted by cases of people contracting the illness, testing positive, and then having either temporarily or more than temporarily shut the schools down. And I know there are requirements that you do need to meet, but I am hopeful that a lot of attention is being paid to how we can improve the remote learning part. I guess I would also like to say that I think despite the fact that it's inconvenient and uncomfortable, masks need to be required at all times for anyone in the school. I know that's not a popular thing to have to do. And, you know, going back to what another gentleman prior to me mentioned was how important routine is to our students' school days. I worry that the constant interruptions that are, I think are inevitable, are going to make it impossible for there a routine to be established. So I guess I'm asking that please keep doing the best you can to follow the science, paying attention to the developments that are, are developing daily and, and try to make the best decisions that you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Brian, it looks like we do have two other people that are looking to speak right now.
And I think just important, we are, for the public, very much focusing on the remote learning and the delivery of that, as Jeff has stated earlier, as well as the other administrators. So it is a primary concern because we do know that's going to be a tool used at some point or during, or at all points during the year. So that is a priority for the school at this point. Go ahead, Scott. Who's up next?
Next up, we have Mitchell Brownstein.
Mitchell, can you hear us?
Okay, I unmuted my mic, so I think you can hear me now, right?
Very good. We can hear you. Just give us your name only, then you have three minutes.
It's Mitchell Brownstein, and our daughter's 12th grader. So I've attended most of the Friday conversation with administrators since we went into remote learning. And I've always expressed the same concern about the lack of community among our students. They felt isolated. They stayed in their room. There was no participation. So regardless of the scenario, question one is, what is a school going to do to increase the sense of community among the students? Two, if we go to either option two or three that Jeff outlined, it sounds like regardless, it's going to be academic only. So what happens to chorus, art, and so on? Are they at least going to be offered remotely? Third question is, our daughter is a thespian. I'm assuming the play, the musical, that type of extracurricular activity, is it going to be addressed in some more unique form that it can be offered? So those are the basic questions.
Want me to speak to that, Brian?
If you can, or if you need time, we can get back to Mitchell.
No, Mitchell's accurate. He has very clearly pointed out that this has been a consistent concern of his, not only, I think, even pre-COVID. He's always focused on the well-being of, and the connectedness, if you will, of, of kids in the high school and in the school in general. So with regard to theater, I don't, and, and those types of things, I don't have an answer yet. I know that as things currently stand, we couldn't run a traditional theater program. I will work with our theater staff to see what alternatives are available that comply with the guidance from the state. And I'm hopeful that we can come up with something. With regard to electives, we're going to do our best to offer them perhaps some in, in session, although unlikely because of the cohorting, but certainly remotely. And I think it's more feasible in options one and two than three because of the condensed nature of the schedule. And I forgot the third question. I know those were two of them.
Mitchell Isilare? I think you got off. If there was any alternative, like online option for the arts, is what I had written down.
I think that that's going to be, I think that I spoke to that, that that's more feasible as a elective offering online in scenario one and two. Three would be very tough to accomplish because we only have four periods to get to the four cores.
Scott, do we have anybody else?
We do. Let's see, we have Ivana Getling here.
Okay, Ivana? Are you there, Ivana?
Rob, Rob Getling.
Oh, Rob, how you doing, Rob?
Good, how you doing? Thank you very much.
Tell us your name and you have three minutes.
All right, Rob Getling. My son would be going into pre-K. I just had a question. If we decided to not send him to school in September and then, let's say, a vaccine miraculously comes out in October, can I send him in October if we feel it's comfortable at that time? Or are we going to be stuck with that decision? I just wanted to make sure and have clarity on that.
The way, if, if we run pre-K, which is our current plan, then just as with any other grade, parents would have the freedom to move in and out of in-person instruction and remote instruction. So as long as your child is registered as a student and elects remote to start, that would not prohibit you from moving your child in at some point later in the year into in-person instruction.
Okay, and I also heard what you said about, so the pre-K and kindergarten is just going to be in the learning center. Is that correct? That's the only place it's going to be? Is that correct?
That's the tentative plan, yeah.
Okay, and then we've got until September 13th to decide if we're going to be putting them in or not? Or do we have to make that decision before that?
Well, I would suggest that you could, certainly you can contact Mr. Malone with additional questions, but if I would register your student.
He's already registered.
Oh, so then you can make that decision at any time.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Jeff, can I ask a question, a clarifying question around that question and answer? If, if before the first day of school, you're going to have to, the, the district administrators will have to put group kids together for the in-person learning, right? So it might be 10 kids, 12 kids, six, whatever that number is.
Right.
So in many districts, it seems like they're setting a date before the first day of school to get that understanding so that they can create those lists and assign kids to certain classes. Wouldn't we need to do the same? Otherwise, people change their mind first day of school. They show up and all of a sudden, you've got a, you, you may not have enough seats or enough classrooms allocated. So I wanted to know, you know, just thinking it through, how logistically would we handle that if we're not requiring kind of a go-no-go for each student by a certain date before the first day of school? Knowing that it can change and if, and they have the option to enter or leave, but just to launch school, wouldn't we need to know that before the first day?
Well, I, I think that for me, the, the key differentiation, because I think you make a valid point. I just wouldn't use the word required. I would use the word encourage. So because what we're saying to our parents is that they are free to move in and out, which I think, given the nature of virus, that's a reasonable stance to take. So someone could, could say they're going to show up in person on August 15th and then on September, you know, 5th decide not to. So I think the stance to take is to put something out that places the decision in context and encourages parents to make the commitment sooner rather than later, but also makes them aware that it's good and they can go in and out.
So that if, if somebody opts to keep their child home and then a month into school, they want their child to start attending, which, you know, they've got the right to do, and that's terrific. Is there a period of time where the district will be given, you know, a day or two, whatever, to figure out where that child will go? Because if we get an influx, we may not have seats currently allocated and the classrooms currently allocated, right?
Yeah, I don't really, I haven't thought through that amount of detail. I'm really thinking right now in terms of, you know, odd strokes, if you will, which is that we make a commitment to the community that they can move in and out. I haven't thought ahead, you know.
Okay, we're still deciding door number one, door number two, or door number three?
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify on this. So for example, I mean, I know the righties, like they can get in and out, you know, from, from school. I mean, is there, so when a new student shows up at the district, how long does it take until they're registered and they can get in, in the classroom? Is it usually big time or less?
It's usually pretty quick. I don't want to speak for the elementary school, but at the middle school, high school, it's usually a couple of days from the time they register until we can create a schedule depending upon their ability to provide us, provide us with a transcript from the school that they came from, because then we'd have to adjust their schedule. Mr. Malone, what's the timeline in the elementary school? Similar?
Same, Jeff.
And then I just want to make one more point, just to be clear. The, the notion of allowing families to move in and out is really a discretionary piece on the district's part. The guidance from the state and from our attorney, who I checked with, is that we're mandated to do that. In other words, we have to provide both options to parents. And the natural extension of that thinking is we can't prohibit someone from switching in and out because we decide locally to do so. That's not congruent with the guidance.
No, I agree with that, but at the same time, I think we have to put the responsibility back to the parents also that, you know, keep doing that, like on and off. Like I changed my mind this week, I'm going to be in, or this month and next month I'm not, because that's putting like, you know, in danger the whole plan we're putting together. It's the way we're saying, you know, it's the responsibility of the parent. If your kid is sick, don't send it to school. But, you know, parents still do that. So, so I think this is like, part of the school is like, we're putting the plan together, but it's also like, everybody needs to cooperate and be on this.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to go to the next?
Yes, please.
So we have Susan Sepola.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hi, I hope this isn't redundant. I wasn't able to log in until a little while ago. But has the question regarding terminating the pre-K been asked to make room for in-person school and social distancing? That's one, one part. And to piggyback that, is it true that we can only put two grades at Stella Maris when that school was capable of accommodating, I believe it was K through eight? Now we can only use it for two grades, pre-K and kindergarten?
So I can answer both of those, Brian. Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
So have we decided to terminate pre-K? No, we haven't. Both pre-K and kindergarten, I don't believe, are mandated by the state. But there's value, obviously, in each of the programs. And for those students who were in our pre-K program last year who are going to be kindergarten students this year, the idea of eliminating kindergarten doesn't make sense. Pre-K, the option to eliminate it has been considered, but we've crunched the numbers. And again, with scenario number two, where we can accommodate pre-K through eight and then go nine, 12 remote, that is
Not remote.
Not remote, not, excuse me, nine through 12 staggered. That is much more than the majority of districts are offering. So given that and the value we place on pre-K, we'd like to keep running it next year. Secondly, the, the comment about Stella Maris, right now, there are seven classrooms that are available. And that was the original plan for the facility. The architectural plan came up with seven classrooms. So I'm not familiar, and I don't, I've never heard the statement from a school official, and I don't mean to contradict you, but it's fact that that facility was intended to house.
Oh, no, I mean originally, when it was Stella Maris, wasn't it the elementary school? So it was K through eight for Stella Maris?
Yes, they, they did have a different grade configuration, but we're subject to the code and to the rules of the State Education Department. And we've received permission to use seven classrooms, which we were well aware of when we went out for the renovation. Nothing's changed. We went forward with securing the architects to design the facility until now. And the seven classrooms would enable us, with social distancing, to do pre-K K.
That's it, just the two grades. It just seems like such a shame that an entire building, supplementary building that wasn't available to us before can now only be used for pre-K, which is a new program, you know, and, and just kindergarten. I understand kindergarten is important and pre-K as well. But I guess having, you know, a moody teenager who, you know, needs to be around and socialize with other kids, and it's really important. But yeah, we can only use that for two grades, seems like such a shame.
Yeah.
Jeff, you also might want to explain that we, that that building is not equipped to handle all the students.
Well, I think, yeah, the first point is we have seven classrooms. So, you know, we're limited essentially in the number of students, regardless of age, in terms of, you know, how many we can get in there. Secondly, the bill, the building was set up and designed as a pre-K daycare center. So it's built for little people. So we are, as per Sandy's comment, it doesn't really impact enrollment per se, because again, it's the same number of students. But we are limited in the size of the students we can send there because the toilets are like very small, the doors are. we can send there, because the toilets are like very small, the doors are small, everything is built for little people.
Thank you, Jeff.
I I would just add that we literally cannot put students in places where the parochial school did. So they they could house kids in classrooms that we legally cannot do as a public school. So we just have greater restriction.
No, it's seven, it also had seven classrooms and they put all kids in one classroom. They didn't have a lot of kids per class, so it did work.
Also, I just wanted to add and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the old days they had in the basement, which we're not allowed to have anymore.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All seven classrooms are on the on the first floor.
We have two more people waiting to speak, so next we're going to go to Christine Alata.
Christine, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Just give us your full name only and then three minutes you have, tell us.
Okay, Chris Alata. And I don't really have a question, but I am on the task force and a parent of an incoming senior. And I just had a, just wanted to give my opinion as a person on the task force. I actually completely support masks being worn even in the classroom, because I think it's the safest. Especially for the older students, simply because they can and it's easier for them to follow safety protocols. So masks and hand sanitizer is something that I that I actually do support with math mask breaks. But I personally do believe that masks should always be worn. And I'm actually not in favor of a strict bell schedule for the students who are doing remote learning, really simply because it can become very disruptive in a household and very stressful for a student to keep on a bell schedule when there are other people involved in your home that aren't on a bell schedule. And I know that that's not something that we have completely decided on yet, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Scott?
Okay, so, sorry, next up we have Michelle, I'm not sure if it's Lyatt or Leat.
Michelle, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Michelle, just give us your name and you have three minutes. Michelle? Did we lose Michelle?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My apologies, technical difficulties. My name's Michelle Leo. I'm the parent of an incoming first grader and a potential pre-K student. I have three questions. They will be brief. I want to know first and foremost, my background, I'm a nurse midwife. And I want to know how are we engaging the medical community to support our efforts in ensuring the safety of the students and teachers as well as supportive staff? I know for a fact that one of our school nurses, Kira Poitras, has a long history as a pediatric ICU nurse, and I would like to know how we are utilizing the resources we have at our hands. My second question is how will we be ensuring the accessibility of remote learning options to our students who have impaired access to Internet services? And my third question is what are the requirements around homeschooling if we as parents do opt to initiate this method for our children?
I can do, I can address all three. The school nurses are part of the reopening task force and the plan that's going to be posted to the web. All three of them have participated and done a tremendous amount of work. They've been accessing the available data out there, whether it's from the Harvard Chen School of Public Health or or Johns Hopkins or attending trainings. And they're bringing that knowledge back to the task force and their knowledge will be embedded in the reopening plan. Accessibility to the Internet and access to technology. We did a lot of outreach last spring, making sure that all of our students who needed computers were loaned those computers. And then we also made efforts to make sure that every student had access to the Internet. And Mr. Fisher, I know you're on the call, you want to speak to that real briefly?
Sure, we were able to procure a handful of wireless Wi-Fi devices that allow students to basically have wireless service. It's similar to cell service for their device at home. So we had made those available as needed. And I expect that if we need to continue that practice in the fall, we will, just as we've made the Chromebook devices available to families that need them as well.
And then the answer to question number three is that if you decide to homeschool, the contact person is the superintendent's assistant, Mary Adomcheck, who will walk you through the steps that you need to follow, including the initial filing, but then the submission of quarterly reports and and she'll provide a pretty detailed if you want to email Ms. Adomcheck directly, she'll get back to you. If you don't have that email address and you just want to email me, I will put you in touch with her.
Thank you all. I appreciate all of your efforts tonight and just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Michelle.
Scott, do we have anybody else?
Yes, Nancy Halleck wanted to speak as well.
Hello.
Nancy Halleck, one last thing. As a former Stella Maris teacher, yes, there were, there was only one section of each of the grades. And grades four through eight were all in the basement, in the downstairs basement, so that does not necessarily work with the code that we have going on here. But going back to the Learning Center building, is there a plan to move the district offices over there to free up in the lower level, to free up more space in the middle school wing?
The tentative plan, assuming that the facility is ready to be moved in, because we're we're currently working on the retaining wall on the back, is to move the business office down, which would open up space in the sixth grade wing, possibly a classroom or two, but likely one, as well as some the the director of technology and the director of facilities and the support staff. So what that ultimately means is that we may be able to gain some space in the sixth grade wing. And if you couple that with pre-K moving down there, it's a total gain of two to three classes, depending on how it's reconfigured.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, what administrator is moving to Stella?
Right now, the tentative plan is Mr. Fisher and Mr. Wilkin and the classroom teachers. And Ms. Baum, excuse me.
I I thought, I could be wrong. I thought you needed a business, an administrator in the in each building.
There's a process for waivers, but Ms. Wallace, who's also going down there, has her building level certification, so we're covered from a legal perspective.
Okay.
Okay, so we have one last, well, we have another person who wishes to speak, so the next one up is Kelly Ziegler.
Kelly, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, hi, Jeff Ziegler.
Hi, Jeff. Thank you for that. You have three minutes.
Sure. Quick question. Is there any contemplation to changing the vacation schedules to compress so that all the kids are going consistently and then have a longer break in the middle and then go consistently? That's it.
So I know that that's in fact what institutions of higher education are doing. So they're bringing students back earlier in August. They're working through Thanksgiving and then they're going on break until they come back. And the predominant reason for that model in higher education is they don't want kids traveling to all parts of the country for Thanksgiving break and then bringing back an increased possibility of disease transmission. That not that model has not been articulated as a possibility to date in public schools. So right now, the 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 most, I guess the most comprehensive answer I can give right now is that it's not on the table. They change depending on on what the conditions on the ground are.
Great. Scott, do we have any other hands up?
We do not.
All right, I have one email. Wait, I have one email I'm going to read and then we're going to go to board questions. An email from Allison Corcoran. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for the hard work and patience. While the meetings are very good for transparency, I feel like my questions are best answered by emails. I respect the district's authority and ability to make decisions for our community. Leadership should know that many families are confident in all of you making decisions for our children and community. As such, one decision, once decisions are finalized, will there be a document distributed to the district when these meetings commence? Many private schools and universities are distributing a code of conduct whereby students are expected to follow specific behaviors such as masks and other examples of handling outdoor activities and common areas. In our case, the code of conduct would mean parents and students. Would you consider distributing that document so that we are all on the same page when this commences? It would include frequently asked questions. How are you all handling or how you are all handling a diagnosed COVID case, tracing, closing, et cetera? One major document would help tremendously. Also, I submitted a question in advance of the meeting tonight to Scott, but I don't know. It doesn't seem that it may have been addressed. I want to know if the question. I want to know if there are any savings to the school district this year because of the situation. So what are those savings? What is the school doing with it? I ask only because there are, there is too much information running rampant on social media. And I want to hear from the source about savings slash costs to the district during this time. Thank you all, Allison and Dennis Corcoran.
So I can speak to the savings issue. Last spring, we talked and presented to the Board of Education the cost savings associated with the closure. So if in fact we go to a remote environment, there will be some cost savings related to transportation, related to sports and activities that we budget for that don't run. Putting a number on it at this point is premature because we don't know what the savings will be. But if you want to go back into last year's board meetings, you'll you'll you can access what the savings were last spring, which I believe were around $800,000 for the period of closure for the in the areas that I just referenced. The second part of the question was, refresh my memory, Brian?
So the second part of the question dealt with a code of conduct or has I read like procedures for students and parents on how to how that new school opening will look and how do that act?
So I think there'll be, that'll be a two-pronged approach. The plan that's posted on the website, which has to be posted by July 31st, that will be a a document that will be fluid and will change, but that will include a lot of the information that Ms. Corcoran seeks to to have conveyed to the public. And then we will also be doing some outreach to families on some other issues that we'll cover tonight in terms of education for students about what school policies are new and and how they can comply with them, the importance of hand washing, the importance of temperature checks and a lot of other protocols and procedures that are new to our community.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And since I see no more hands raised, I would open it up to board questions or comments.
Brian, a parent asked, reached out to me and asked if I would ask a question on their behalf because they they weren't able to dial in. Tracy Robinson has asked a question that I think we've gotten from a lot of parents via email as a board, so I think this this will be relevant to many people. She wanted to know if all three scenarios have the fifth grade remain in the elementary school building. And and she's asking because she thinks it's a priority for the fifth graders to stay there.
So we've we've covered that, but I'll cover it again, that our planning over the last week and some in has the fifth grade in the elementary school. So as it's currently constructed, we have pre-K K at the Sag Harbor Learning Center, grades one through five at the elementary school and grades six through 12 at the middle school, high school. If situations change or enrollment changes and we have to adapt, we'll consider adoptions, but at this point, that's the plan. In all three scenarios.
Thank you. And then as a question that's coming from me is if you could just kind of articulate what the next steps are and the timeline around it, knowing that things are very fluid, but for us to get from where we are now to opening day, what are kind of the big milestones, the big rocks and and that you can share with the board and the public?
So the 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 immediate responsibilities on the part of the district are to submit the survey to the state by the 31st, which I believe is Friday, and to get our tentative plan up on the website. And then from that point forward, it's the administrators working on the technical details associated with each plan while concurrently providing staff development regarding remote learning. And all of those steps are implemented knowing that we don't know what September 14th is going to bring. So as much as I'd like to say, hey, we're going to decide by August 15th that we do a, you know, option A, I don't think that's realistic. I think we plan for all three scenarios. Increase our ability to deliver remote instruction in a quality manner and then adapt depending on the conditions on the ground. The only thing that we might refine between now and mid-August is narrowing down maybe option two and three to one option. In other words, making maybe eliminating one of those. And we'll have some further discussions about that. Like for instance, tonight, I mentioned that the time requirements that the International Baccalaureate Organization requires for standard level and higher level courses would not be met with option number three. So if the IBO, the International Baccalaureate Organization, does not come down with relaxed guidance, option number three may have to come off the table and it may be basically three options, one being remote, one being the first scenario and one being scenario number two.
You're muted, Chris.
Thank you. And at some point, we're going to have to draw a line in the sand, knowing that with circumstances it could change. But we'll have to draw a line in the sand so families will know what to do.
Are there any other board questions or comments, thoughts on this matter? At this point, I mean, there's going to be more. And again, for the public, we have another meeting, our next meeting, rather, is on August 3rd, this coming Monday, where this will be on again for an update and subsequent filing to the plan from our superintendent. Are there any other comments from the public at this time? And again, no more board comments or otherwise? With that, it we are into item 7.1. Is there a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of discussing employment of a particular person and a litigation update if necessary?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Victoria, you're going to open up voting?
Yep, it's coming.
And for the public, just to know, board, you emailed that link as to the executive session. After the executive session, we will be coming out of executive session. There is one action item, which will be item 8.1. And then the meeting will be adjourned after that. So that is the only additional item that will be addressed potentially after executive session.
I'm sorry, I'm just waiting on Susan. Thank you, that's unanimous.
Brian, can I get some clarification, please? Is your expectation that you're coming back into this Zoom meeting for that action? So I need to keep this meeting open?
Procedure wise, what's what do we have to do on that? Because we're going to go out on one, yes. We're going to have to come back into this meeting. Scott?
Yeah, we have to come back to a public meeting to take any formal board action vote.
Correct.
But I I think I think what Scott might be asking, is it possible to convene into executive session to just to discuss anything that would bring us out quickly for resolution 7.1, so the meeting could close and we could go back into executive session for other issues?
Instead of being an executive session for an hour versus 10 or 15 minutes?
That makes sense.
I don't know if we can, but we can try that, sure. So we will, we will try to keep this meeting open, Scott, we will log off and then log back in.
Yeah, I'm going to pause the recording.
Very good.
And then someone just give me a heads up when you're coming out of exec, so I can make sure I'm.
I will text you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll leave this open, thank you.
For 9:30 at night.
Let's see, panelists, we have Susan back, we have Jordana back, we have Sandy back, we have Yorgos back.
Just so you guys know, for our second exec, I had ended that last exec meeting, so I'm gonna send everybody.
Thank you, Jordana.
You gonna send a new one now, Jordana?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Susan's back, and Alex is back, and Chris is back. So we are all back. Is there, we're back, okay.
We're back.
We are back. So item, coming out of executive, item 8.1 on tonight's agenda.
Did, did you motion and do all that to come out of exec already?
We did, I have those times for you, and I'll email them to you unless you'd like them now.
That's fine.
Okay. Is there a motion on 8.1 under action items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Very good. Is any discussion? Discussion from any of the members of the board?
Does it make sense for the superintendent just to say what we're voting on and why, so that we can move forward with the public understanding it?
Jeff, can you do that, please?
Yeah, I just, I just logged in. Are we talking about Montoc Bus?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, if you could just tell, we have a motion and a second, and we're under discussion for Montoc Bus. And it was just asked if you could summarize what we're doing here and the reasons.
Sure. So what's on the, the, for your vote this evening is a resolution that does two things. Number one, it settles a contract dispute with Montoc Bus regarding the closure period from last year and a discounted payment to Montoc Bus. And then secondly, it extends the contract through the 2020-21 school year. And in deciding whether or not to proceed with the extension, we considered what our transportation capabilities were, assuming school was in session. And what we concluded was, if we did not go with an extension with Montoc Bus, we would not be able to fill our transportation requirements or obligations for 2021. So my recommendation is, the most conservative course of action is to approve the resolution this evening.
Any further discussion from members of the board? Thank you, Jeff. Victoria, if you could open up the vote.
Mine's not, mine's not loading.
If it's still not loaded, Sandy, if you want to give me your verbal, I'll do that.
Okay, yeah, great, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy.
I can't, I can't go back and forth, I wouldn't do it.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion under 9.1 to go into executive session to discuss the specific? Hold on, let me read it correctly.
Yeah, it needs to, it needs to be precise.
Motion to convene into proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a particular person.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait on the vote, unless anyone's not voting, give your verbal.
Just a reminder, I sent everybody a new link for a second exec.
And for the public, we will not, the meeting will end at the end of executive. The board will be taking no action after that. So this will be the end of the public meeting.
Okay, Sandy, how do you vote?
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you.
All right, thank you. Everybody, have a good evening, and I'll see the board members.
For our first meeting tonight, I'll see you soon.
Yes.